Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Franklin Board of Education. The meeting has been properly posted. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Yank?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Dr. Kahn?
Here.
Mrs. Wukowski?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wukowski, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Community comment. Please hold your comments to three minutes and everything else on the agenda. We have one person, Jennifer Shipley, please.
My name is Jennifer Shipley. I reside at fifty-three forty-one West Harvard Drive in Franklin. And I would like to speak in regards to proposed math curriculum change at the high school, which would make precalculus an AP-only class. I'm not sure what the benefit is to pushing AP on every student. Why are the science classes now called pre-AP Biology and pre-AP Chemistry? Isn't that implying that the AP courses are somehow better or needed to be successful? While I feel that AP precalculus is a great option for some students, I do not feel having AP as the only option is inclusive for all students. AP classes in every subject and the additional rigor required of them can be very stressful to students. Not all students want that stress and rigor in every class and look to balance their schedules. The well-being of the entire student needs to be taken into account when considering a change that does not allow options for the student. While it is true that many students seek out AP classes, not all students need or want that to be a requirement for them. Many students that take AP classes are also involved in other extracurricular activities that also compete with their time. Using my own children as an example, my son is a senior this year, was in advanced math coming up and therefore took precalculus as a junior. He wanted to take a fourth year of math, but did not want AP calculus and chose regular calculus because of three other AP classes already in his schedule as a senior. He's also a year-round multi-sport athlete, holds a job, volunteers, and finds time for socialization as high school students should. There are weeks when there is very little sleep and stress levels are high. Today's students have a lot of pressure on them from all facets of life. My son will be attending the college of his choice, but is not going into a math-heavy field and chose AP classes in other subjects that he is more interested in and fit more of his post-high school educational field. He did not want the stress and time commitment of a fourth AP class in his schedule as a senior. Three years of math is required for graduation. For students that have been in advanced math since grade six, precalculus is their third and required math class. This would be requiring some juniors to take an AP class because they need their third year of math. Many juniors also have multiple AP classes already. Many students take multiple AP classes in other subjects such as biology, chemistry, psychology, literature, language, just to list a few. Also, all have non-AP options or are electives. Having an option for AP precalculus in the math field is a nice option, but should be balanced with the option for a regular precalculus class. I would like the Franklin School District to strongly consider the effects on the whole student when making curriculum decisions. I do feel there's a place for AP precalculus, but I also feel strongly that there's a need for regular class options as well. And understandably, if the regular class option does not fill enough seats to warrant a section, that's understandable. But I don't feel automatically forcing them into AP is the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we'll be talking about that further tonight. All right, anybody else care for community comment? Or that forgot to put their name in? Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Wukowski.
It was me, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wasn't it?
I don't know. It's two at the same time.
Oh, sorry.
I heard both you and Linda Mary. Anyway, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School Board Calendar, Regular Board of Education Meeting, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the ECC at six. And on Wednesday, June twenty-first, in the ECC, also at six o'clock. District Administrator update. Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right. So this week, we are excited because it's Educator and Staff Appreciation Week. There's a lot of special days for a lot of the professions that feed into our school system. We like to spend this week to honor everybody, to make sure we never miss any groups, and just to make it a really special week across the buildings. So we're extremely thankful for our PTAs, especially in the elementary schools that have really poured a lot of love into the buildings. A lot of our love is shown through food, but there's been a lot of really nice messages to our teachers, from parents, from students, and to each other, from faculty to faculty, which we've appreciated. The board has sent cookies, which I think showed up in the buildings today already. So that was a nice treat that was also enjoyed. So we just want to thank all of our staff, you know, from those that are in the classroom every day, to serving our meals to our students, to making sure our buildings are ready throughout the day, through the evening, you know, we have cleaners, we have crews here nonstop, to those that even transport our students to school, just thanking them because it really takes everybody. And I think that Franklin does a really nice job of recognizing that. So it's a special week for us in that way. Tomorrow night just happens to fall the same week as our retirement dinner. And we're looking forward to celebrating with the retirees that are able to make it and celebrate with us and kind of celebrate those moments. We're doing that at the Lux Bay in town. We'd also like to thank, kind of a shout-out to our families also, as we've had MAP testing, we've had FORWARD testing, we have AP testing going on, like testing, testing, testing. Obviously, we look at our students from a variety of avenues, not just their test scores, but May always becomes that heavier time from what the state mandates us to test in and also our way of looking internally at our universal screener. So we're thankful to our families for supporting us in that work, to our educators for rearranging schedules to make that happen so that we can continue to look at where we're growing and where we have room to grow as we reach all our learners. Another exciting thing in May for the district is this year, we've partnered with the city health department and the Volition to look at Mondays as mental health, like appreciation or awareness day. So every Monday in May, we're encouraging staff to wear green, and that's also going on in the city. So it's been a nice way to partner together to look at that. We've also looked at how are we taking in mental health and just wellness through physical well-being this school year? And it's kind of been a nice moment to focus on those gear-up sessions that we've had through our six PD days this year, where staff have had an opportunity to not just grow in what we're doing in the classroom, but also we've had yoga and some other sessions, we've had people in to do blood pressure, just other areas that maybe sometimes we don't focus as a staff or maybe starts a new habit. So it's just been a nice kind of culmination of the year. Last year this time, I believe I was entering into the world of joining Franklin Public Schools, so it was really exciting. And I remember also hearing a lot about Culture Fest. It had just happened, so I didn't have the opportunity to attend. So I'm excited that next Friday, the nineteenth of May, at five o'clock, five to eight-thirty, I believe, the high school will be hosting Culture Fest, not just for our families, but for anybody in the community. So hopefully you're available to come or tell your neighbors and other groups that you might be a part of. But that's next Friday, the nineteenth, at the high school. So that's our biggest updates in the district right now.
Thank you very much. Reports, presentations, and other school board business. AP precalculus course approval. Mr. Blessington, please.
All right. Good. Good evening, everybody. We have a group here like we did a couple of weeks ago. But before we get started, I just really, I'm going to open up to some questions just a minute. But I know there's some lingering questions. We spent a considerable amount of time, hopefully answering a lot of questions, I think, in the interim between our, some of our updates. We had some other questions that came in. So I just want to provide just a brief recap just for all the board to hear that. So questions related to precalculus versus pre-AP calculus. When we look at those two courses side by side, they're really, they're relatively the same. They're the same courses. Students have the ability to take the AP test to assist in their college journey. The point is, is precalculus is precalculus. The standards and goals are really consistent nationally. In terms of offering both precalculus and AP precalculus, you know, from what our team here and some of the work we've involved in, will really serve no purpose. It would really serve, it would really serve no purpose in offering the course with the same standards with two different course names. So I think that's important for you to know, the standards are the same. Adding AP allows us to better understand the terms in term, of course, in terms of preparation of students, since our current course is so aligned. So again, that alignment of our current course aligns really nicely with this, the AP precalculus and really helps open up some avenues in terms of networking. And we described that next time, last time, in terms of our AP precalculus teachers, whoever's teaching that course. So I think that's important when we talk about these two courses side by side, and we talked about that briefly. A question came up in terms of math credits, you know, and looking at our data, students take essentially approximately four years of math, so between three-point-nine and four-point-three. There's, and the other piece that I wanted to mention too, is, and this is mentioned with our, you know, with our community comments, is we have a declining interest in calculus, too. So a question came up regarding our IM two and three. Is, how aligned is it to precalculus or AP calculus? It is very much in alignment, so students who are taking that sequence of courses, it's aligned very nicely. Why is this coming now? This option was, came available to the board a couple of years ago. You know, the option was not available when we came to the board a couple of years ago to request leveling up precalculus. So this course will be on the books, I think, starting next spring, for sure, so students will be able to take the test. So when we looked at our math framework in comparison to this new course that's being offered by AP, they aligned very nicely, so it was a nice match. And it really gives us a chance to, like, make that alignment and offer students who want to take that, get that AP credit, you know, they can take the AP test if they choose. So this is very collaborative, you know, over a couple of years process in terms of like the work that's gone in math between our counselors, between our teachers, between central office staff in the past and now. So I just wanted to put that statement out there and, but then open it up for questions. I know that last time, our teacher up, Jim, was not available to stay because he had a very tight schedule. So I want to be very conscious of his time because he does have like a, like a hard, fast timing, needs to depart relatively soon, so.
I was going to say, maybe if, I know Angie and maybe others had questions for Mr. Kolikowski, so maybe, maybe we could ask those questions of him before he has to go.
I have like twenty-ish minutes, so.
Okay. Linda, please.
So AP, though, I understand, though, isn't the pace of the class and the content, isn't it different than?
So I did like a, as, so this was my first year teaching, like, the precal, when we've combined, merged honors and regular precalculus. So I was normally just a regular precalculus teacher. I did not teach honors. And so when we merged them together, I kind of had like an adjustment period this year as far as like pacing and things like that. And then because I was already kind of turning the wheels on like what, having like a college credit, college credited like precalculus anyway, I'd already talked to Mr. Volo about doing that in advance, like before AP precal even existed, like, it's like three, four years ago. And so when I found that out, that it existed, what I was interested in is just seeing like how what we were doing now is like aligns with what AP does. And we covered, just by my estimation, we covered everything that is on the AP precalculus test around February or March. So with regards to pacing, I, I don't think it's an issue. It's more of just like that depth of understanding, which I just, I don't know, I, like, it's a new course. I haven't seen the questions yet. I'm waiting on a textbook. I've already requested like a sample just to see like what it looks like, but that's.
So this is a brand-new course for AP?
Correct. This was.
And we're jumping in on that first year.
So the first time any district could add it to their books would be for next year, and we're proposing that we add it for the year after that. So next school year would be the twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-three, twenty-four school year, where proposing students can sign up for it the year after that. So some districts will have it next year.
Also, to the year after.
So next spring would be the first time someone could take the AP precal test, which some of our students will sign up for, but we won't offer the AP course until the year after that. That's what we're proposing.
And this is why we couldn't bring it to you two years ago when we talked about precal, because we didn't know AP was going to offer this.
Absolutely. So if a student X wants to take four years of math, and he takes the algorithm of Math one, Math two, Math three A and B, is that student at disadvantage, so he can take IM three B in the senior year, or he can take honors right now, what you have in the precal, you know? So a question is that if you compare three B to AP calculus, is it same level or is it more difficult?
So the three B would be typically about the second half of IM three. So if they finish the three B course, they've really accomplished IM one, two, and three. And then we typically don't have students take another math course because most of our three B classes, seniors, if not all of them, right? Yeah, every single one, every single one is, yeah.
So they'd be ready for precalculus their first year in college.
My question is that if the students, if a student wants to take, he can continue that path of Math one, Math two, and then junior and senior year, he can take IM three A and B. As a senior, he can take IM three B.
So the only option, if you want four years of math to have a regular level, not a college-level class, would be to do IM one, IM two, and then the IM three A one year and IM three B the next year. So you would have to decide as a sophomore that your four years of math would be three A and three B. If you got through IMs one, two, and three, and you're in your junior year, you're in IM three, and you decide, wow, you know what? Colleges want my fourth year of math, but I am really, you know, I'm struggling or I have other priorities in other classes. My only choice would be an AP class. There would be, if you took IM one, two, and three, you would not be able to take a, like, regular-level class or senior year. You would have to choose AP precal as this is proposed tonight.
The one thing.
Am I correct?
You're correct. And the one thing I would add is that currently, like this year and next year, like, the students are taking a class that's just as rigorous, if not more rigorous, than what we're proposing in terms of the AP precal class.
So my question to that, because I hear you saying that what we're doing now and an AP class are the same thing. In my experience, and I think I'm not the only one in this room who would say that, an AP class is supposed to be a college-level class, and a non-AP or regular, for lack of a better term, class is supposed to be like a high school-level class. So is there something that we're doing, I don't want to say we're doing too much for our students, but are we asking too much of them? Is there something that we could adjust? I understand this is the first year that you've offered this precal, precal class. Previously, it was two separate classes, and now you merged them into one this year. So is it possible that we've, you know, we've gone too far with this one?
So I've, I taught the regular precalculus course, and so this was my first year doing the, whatever, the merged. And when I looked at, I compared my last three years of teaching just the regular precalculus course, and I'm looking at like average grade, median grade, just to see like, like, are my grades lower or what's going on? I have the same or higher averages and medians in my current precalculus classes than I did the previous three years when it was like divided into honors and regular. So I don't know that the, I think, like, the, if the, if there, I do think it's more rigorous, but I think like, I've also noticed students are rising to that challenge. So I, like I said, my, my grades have been pretty much on par with what they've been in the last three years in precalculus. And our math team has also taken steps at IM one, two, and three, knowing where students need to be and when they start that precal course. So they're making adjustments in IM three, such as going more in-depth in topics such as trigonometry, that typically wasn't something they went deep into because they know that's something that's going to be focused in precal. So that adjustment at the lower levels and that filling in the gap there should help students as they get to that more rigorous course in their fourth year.
Is it? Is it possible, so you can, if we put ourselves in the shoes of a student, he comes in, junior, he takes IM one, a sophomore, he takes IM two, and sophomore, he's not sure, you know? As most of the kids, they don't even know what they are going to, go off to college or not go for college. So if the student is still not decided, am I right? And as a sophomore, you have to decide, okay, I am taking IM three, or then I have to take AP cal, or I have to take IM three A, three B. Miss Anstap, I'll ask you kind of, the question is that, in your experience, do you feel that it's too much to ask for a sophomore to make that decision at that point? Because if they are not ready and if they are not thinking of doing sciences as a major, then is it too much to ask, to commit them, to make a decision as a sophomore to make that decision?
I think, no, because in this case, kind of to speak to what both of you just said, like, the student in IM two, for the most part, most of the students are ready for IM three without the three A or the three B. So this is what the team has worked on really hard the last few years, is making sure that when they're in IM three, they're getting the pieces that they need so that when they hit that precal level, they're ready to go. And I would say that regardless of what their interest is, if they are not necessarily math passionate, then I think the AP precal is actually ideal for them because it's a chance for them to earn that, like, college credit that would set them up really well post-secondary. If they are passionate for the math, you know, great, they can continue on with that piece. But this, like, we've grounded the precalculus in the state standards around precalculus, which is, as Jim was saying, like, aligned to what, when the College Board released their framework for precalculus, it was those standards, at least as far as we can tell from the framework. So like, this is precalculus, like what Bob said at the very beginning, precalculus is precalculus. So the students, by going through one, two, and three, they don't, they will be ready for precalculus. I wouldn't say that there's going to be like an angsty moment in sophomore year where kids have to decide, am I going to be ready for precalculus? That's like what their math learning will lead them up to. I don't know if there's anything else.
Angie, please.
I really appreciated, so I support the addition of the AP precalculus. I'm still honestly turning over whether I support the removal of the regular precalculus. Mr. Kolikowski, would you be willing to share with the board just the advantage? I spoke with you today about, for students who perhaps want to fulfill a challenging college math credit. I think that really is, for me, a very strong reason why this course should be added.
So again, I'll kind of reiterate what I told you before, is that a few years ago, I was in, like, already researching how to turn precalculus into like a CAP class, so like where students would receive college credit for it. And I was looking at, how am I going to do that? What credits do I need as a teacher to be certified to do that? Because in, I've taught precalculus every single year since I've been in Franklin. This is my sixth year that I'm finishing up. Every year I've taught minimum of two, three precalculus classes, so I've had a lot of, over a thousand precalculus students. And a lot of general theme that I had in discussions with them is that, like, they don't get college credit for this, so now they have to worry about a placement test, they have to worry about, like, how am I going to get this college, how am I going to get my college math done when I'm going to be a nurse? And I only need like the minimum math required to become a nurse. And so in discussions with all of them, I was like, okay, is there a way that I can just get them that math credit and be done with it? Because I just know based on my own research that I've done that math is the single greatest barrier preventing people from getting a bachelor's degree. So if we can get over that hurdle while we're in high school and we have more support and it's, there's more time to cover that content, whereas in college, it's a semester-long course, here we got a full year. Like, to me, that's just a huge advantage for those students. And so like, I more so pursue this as an opportunity for those students to get that credit that, again, can cover, jump over that, that biggest hurdle while they're still in high school and they have more support versus when they get off to college.
So I really applaud your foresight and passion for helping those students who fall into that category. This sounds like a great opportunity for them. What is the harm of, especially that given that there's been a lot of changes in this particular area of the curriculum? And I understand you've been working on the, all aspects of the curriculum for years. And this has been one that's had a lot of sort of shifting sands in it. What would be the harm in allowing the non-AP version to actually run, see what the experience of actually teaching the AP course is before we took away the non-AP version of the course? And allow the students sort of interest, student interest, to help us make the decision of whether it's needed or not?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I guess my, I think to what others have said here is that, like, we're, we're essentially doing the AP sort of curriculum. Like, that's the, based on the framework that I've seen and all the research that I've done, looking at what College Board has provided, like, that curriculum is currently already happening.
As far as, you know, you haven't taught it.
Correct. I haven't taught it, yes. So, but like, we're, like, even now, like, I'm still making adjustments to what we do things on a regular basis, like, I'm not going to recycle the same things every year.
You sound like you're a great teacher and you'll think on your feet. I think the other thing with AP classes is that there is a different cadence to the class. Even if the class is the same curriculum and standards, there is this group focus on there will be a test in May. And so I think that automatically sort of, I just don't, I just have a hard time believing that AP classes are not different. And I think that they should be different.
Well, and that's, I mean, I think that the definition of an AP class is you're going to use for college credit. I think we don't know yet what colleges will give for credit because the class hasn't even been taught yet. So the AP precal, you know, you, yes, great, we're going to offer it and students can get their credit, but will colleges accept it as credit and how much credit? And speaking as a nurse, you probably are still going to have to take a math class in college or at least a number of years ago. We won't talk about how many. I did. So I mean, we're not, we're not trying to, I appreciate that you're trying to get the kids the help. And it, you know, in a lot of ways, you know, that's great and they will be more prepared. I don't think we can tell kids, if you take this class, you're not going to have to take math in college. And the AP precal, we don't, it's brand-new. We don't know what, what colleges will accept or won't accept, or will they give you full credit or not full credit, you know, that type of thing. I love the idea of offering the AP precal so students can choose that if they want. But I, I would agree with Angie. I have a very hard time making that choice for every student. Our goal is to serve every student, and I don't, I just, you're telling me four-point-nine year, like, or three-point-nine years of math. Like, most of our students, if you tell me, you know, twenty percent of our kids are taking all four years of math, and be like, okay, maybe there's not as much demand for these higher-level math classes. But you're telling me most of our Franklin students are taking four years of math? I think it's only fair to all of our students, not just, you know, certain ones or whatever else, but every student to be able to make that choice for themselves about, can I take an AP class? Am I ready to take an AP class? Do I want the rigor and, you know, what's the word? Do you just use?
Anducadence.
Of that class. And maybe we offer it for, you know, another two or three years and we find it really is the same. AP precal is no longer new. The College Board has adjusted things. We know what the test looks like, all those kinds of things. But I just, I, I will say, I just, I have a real hard time making that choice for every student, knowing that there are students who do choose not to take AP classes for any number of reasons.
I would just add that, I mean, although he hasn't taught the class yet because it's not on the books, we've, you've done a little bit more digging in terms of the framework was on that test. And I mean, you made a comment about the pacing of that, what you're noticing. In terms of the rigor, what we're currently offering now, we have strong evidence to support that it is in really tight alignment of what we're already doing anyway. So again, like I mentioned, began, like, I, I want to understand the purpose of having parallel classes. I mean, we could have some unintended consequences by, if we, we knew there was a disproportionate amount of students in one course versus the other, it really serves no purpose. So that, I mean, certainly the board can make that decision if you want to amend what we're proposing, but this is, like, we're fully supportive of this and it's in line with like, kind of the continued work of the team here now and in the past. So I just, I don't see how it would serve a purpose to have both.
Did you mention that they, they could take their pre-calc class next year and still take the exam they wanted to?
Yeah, so students can sign up for any AP course that they want, whether we offer the AP course or not. So next year, Jim's gonna-
Oh, any exam they want, they can sign up.
Yeah, the AP exam. Jim's gonna do a really good job teaching three sections of pre-calc next year, and his students could take the test if they so desired to. They have to make those decisions pretty early, so they usually rely on the recommendations of our staff. But I think our staff is pretty aware of what's in the curriculum. And although they'll be teaching pre-calc as they are now, next year, they're still pretty confident students would be prepared and do well on that test if interested, especially our seniors.
How many do, or that doesn't exist?
We, we don't know. I mean, our juniors will have the opportunity to go to calc AB or calc BC, so they have an opportunity to still earn college credit. But however, they could still take that AP pre-calc test if they're a senior, and some juniors might do as well.
AP stands for Advanced Placement, correct? And so I assume that next year, there is an advanced placement test that virtually all colleges will take for placement for pre-calculus, that that will fulfill a requirement in college. Is that, is that, is that a correct assumption?
We would anticipate that colleges will look at that. We can't know, you know, what each individual college will choose, but obviously lots of colleges have accepted to some level.
Yeah, there's years of evidence to support the College Board works very closely with colleges to get their courses approved and accepted, and they usually do the work on the back end to know.
That's what the AP process is now. I mean, this isn't, this isn't the first AP class, this is the first AP pre-calculus class.
And based on like the flyer you saw in the attachment, we anticipate that they've done, like Joy said, some background work, and they anticipate a lot of colleges giving credit for this.
Only if you take the test.
Right.
Okay. My daughter's going to take AP pre-calc, but she's not going to take the test. Is there a, is she doing herself a disservice?
No, there's a lot of evidence that supports that students taking an AP class is a positive impact on their growth and well-being. And it's actually one of our academic indicators of success at the college level, simply being exposed to that curriculum. So we push that, even if students aren't willing to take a test or don't want to take a test.
Her anxieties.
Yeah, a lot of students take a lot of AP classes, but don't take the tests in every class.
Jim, I know you have to leave, so. So I'd want to ask you, you said something about the class being, in, in, basically the requirements are, are done in March for what you would have to do for the AP class. I, I don't know what exactly that means, but does that mean the pacing is slower? So that you're ready for the test in May, May 1st roughly?
Again, I don't know, like, because I haven't seen questions, I haven't seen, like, exactly what this is all entailing. But just based on, like, these are the, like, subjects, like, the topics that are going to be covered for the AP test, there's only three units, and we covered the vast majority of those topics in some way, shape, or form by, like, February, March. So that, like, as far as, like, the rigor in getting students prepared for to take this test, I think we're already there. The other thing that I guess I would add to that is that, currently as it stands, what we have for pre-calculus, like, the rigor needs to be there to prepare them for AP Calculus BC. Like, that, like, that is the minimum bar that we have to have, because we have juniors in that class that are going to be taking calc BC as seniors. So like, that's what I mean by, like, the rigor is already there. We're already preparing them for calc BC, which is the toughest math class that we offer at Franklin High School. So I think the, the, we're basically just, like, basically providing an opportunity is what I see it as, from all the work that I've done. I'm, I'm not an, you know, I'm an expert when it comes to, like, teaching math. I'm like, I have no idea what this pre-calc is going to be like, because it's just, it's new. So, but every indication that I've seen is basically, like, we're going to pretty much be doing what we're doing now, and we're just going to offer you the opportunity for some college credit, from everything that I've, all the research that I've done.
Does anybody have any more specific questions for Mr. Kolokowski, because he's got to go?
So hypothetically, student comes in, does this IM one, two, three, and then he's not doing good in IM three, as a junior. What would be his option as a senior then?
So what, and I don't know how often this has happened, and I don't know if you want to correct me on this. I, because I've taught IM three and IM three B. I've had students, my, when I was teaching IM three A, they were in IM three first semester, and then second semester, they came to IM three A. That has happened. I've also had students that took IM three, and either they passed one semester, failed one semester, they were struggling or whatever, and they just went straight to IM three B for their fourth year of math. So like, I know that's happened, I don't know how often that happens, but that's an option.
So there'll be options for students, for example, if he comes in, sees that, hey, I'm not doing an IM three well now, I don't think I'll be ready for AP Calc, then he can just basically switch to IM three A, and then do IM three B as a senior.
They could, but we do anticipate if you complete IM three, that you'll be ready for pre-calc.
What about if he's not doing good in IM three?
Then he likely wouldn't earn the credit, and we'd keep working with him?
See, that's where I wonder if, if there is a need for something else. And maybe it's not, I'm sorry. Maybe it's not-
Email me in contact, like, call me.
Maybe it's not, you know, a choice between regular pre-calc and AP pre-calc. Maybe there's a need, and I don't know, maybe there's a need in our curriculum for IM four. Like, you know what I mean, like, some bridge between those.
Yeah, that, that, that concern's been brought up by our math team as well. And so Anita and I have done some of that work this year. And when we look at other course guides or other districts around us, it's really hard to understand the standards that are in IM three, the standards that are in pre-calc, and what is in between. There isn't a lot. Like, pre-calc and IM three, like, that is the next class. So a lot of courses will have a class that will be called something like College Prep, but will be the IM one and two standards. So we've already taught that, we already have a class for that. So what we've been looking into are more elective areas, such as maybe there's a semester-long stats class, or there's a more, there's a deeper dive into some of the topics or standards that aren't covered as heavily. But that would be work that is, you know, very much in the beginning stages, that, you know, wouldn't be ready to match this proposal. But in other districts, like, lowering the level of math would be a disservice to our students who already have passed and shown competency in those standards. So to say you're taking IM one as a senior would be inappropriate, which is what the level of some of those courses in other districts appear to be, based on the course guides. But I agree, like, there is, there is an, there is a, there is a gap, it seems like, for our students. And colleges are very open in saying that they don't care what the math is, but a fourth year of math is going to be really helpful.
And that's, that's where my concern is, because I, you know, having one kid who's going to college, one kid who's in the process, that's what I'm looking at, all these colleges, they, they do want a fourth year of math. And I think we would be doing our students a disservice to not make it easy for them to get, not easy, it's like, we're just going to do basic addition facts, but you know what I mean? Like, I, I just think we need to think about all of our students. And until we have that other class in place, I think we should keep an option for the student who, for whatever reason, maybe it's their mental health, maybe their, you know, maybe their anxiety, their home situation, or their, you know, whatever that is, doesn't allow them to have that rigor of an AP class. And even if you're saying it's the same thing, I think there, you know, there can be a mental block to that. Like, I can't do an AP class, who knows? But I think that until we have a different option for that fourth year of math, it's fair to keep, especially since pre-calc has changed now, these last couple of years, honors, regular, now it's all together. Now we're going to make it, you know, all AP. Maybe having a couple of years of stability of, there is this base, you know, there is just pre-calc. And until there is another option, we keep that in our, in our offerings. And then based on student interest, student need, you know, whatever all the different pieces are, come back and look at it again, review it in a year or two.
I, I would say the, I would say, from what I'm hearing, the instability is in, the instability might be just in the, in what the courses are called, not in actually what's being taught. It, it appears to me, and this is, this is way oversimplified, I realize this, but pre-calculus is pre-calculus. I mean, it's, it might be more rigorous, it might be not more rigorous, but math is math. I mean, it's, it's, we're leveling up and making the classes more rigorous, but, but math is math. And we're calling it, we're calling, whether we call something calculus or AP calculus, and it's the same thing, but we, we don't think it's the same thing because we, because we think it's something different. But the experts are telling us it's the same thing.
So when I met with Mr. Kolokowski today, I specifically asked him, you can tell me if I'm misquoting him, because you all were there too. I said, what is the difference between calculus, from a teaching perspective, and the AP calculus? Because I had that very question, is it merely a perception? And he cited that he, that he teach, it's, there are some things he teaches differently in the calc. He used math terms that I didn't understand. He was talking about, like, F prime one, and so then I started, like, daydreaming. But he did say that it was taught differently. And so.
And we don't know yet what the AP-
Just AP versus regular calc.
We don't know yet.
We haven't talked about that.
We don't know yet what the AP pre-calc is really going to look like, because it doesn't, doesn't actually exist yet. So we don't know how that might be taught differently, or what the needs might be, because we haven't, we haven't seen yet, you know, nobody has seen yet what AP pre-calc looks like, and what the test looks like, and things like that.
It seems like it's 95% form. Is that, is that, is that fair to say?
The AP, the AP pre-calc curriculum in the College Board resources is over 100 pages long. And in that resource, they have a, a one-pager that lists the four units, which is what Jim's referencing and what he's cross-referenced with, when it says, unit in lesson 1.1 will be this topic, and this and that. So when he gets to something like, you know, trigonomic functions and graphs, and he says, you know, sine functions versus cosine versus trig, typically we're covering that in three lessons. It's, you know, 50% of one of those three, he feels pretty good about the pacing. So that's, that's what he's referencing in that.
And he can see even more than the one-pager, because then, then they go through and say, in this unit, here's all the learning objectives. So he does have a sense, I mean, I think we all have a sense, especially the math experts in the group of us, of what, what, what's being talked about, like you said, pre-calculus, pre-calculus, like.
We're not going into the dark on this proposal. Like, we've done, we've done the homework, this is like, oh, we don't know, we're going to get this bulletin, it's going to tell us. We have a pretty strong sense of what's going to be taught.
I agree with you, I'm trying to make, I'm trying to get that point across. That we're, we don't know exactly what it is, but we're, I don't know, 95% of the way there? Times F prime, perhaps, I, I don't know.
Times F prime.
That's good. And we have a year, 24, 25, so we're, we're intentionally coming in front of you early so we can really get everything in line, which I think there's already been a lot of work in this particular example of, like, we've done some of this work in anticipation of this. So this, I, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think one thing to remember, when we came to, to a level of pre-calc, we had two different pre-calc courses. We had an honors pre-calc and a regular pre-calc, where there wasn't a lot of difference. Maybe they got a little bit further in the honors pre-calc, maybe they went a little bit more in-depth. But at that time, our argument was essentially the same, the standards are the same, the class is the same. And the work this team has done since then is to take the honors pre-calc and really honor a lot of what was happening there, and get every student that's going to be in that class to that level. And Jim's data to support the first eight months of our school year is that, that's going well. So to be able to say, now we have this opportunity to really keep the framework of that class in line, and now call it something else with two different letters in front, like, isn't going to drastically change a ton? What did change was two years ago, leveling up from honors and regular to having just pre-calc. That was the change, that was the big work. And that's what that team put into place for the course that's in place right now. So to go backwards from that would be a challenge. And honestly, the course that they have currently constructed is probably preparing students more for AP Calc and AP Calc BC than the AP pre-calc is, because of how much they're covering. We'd probably scale some of that back to make sure students are focused on just what's on the test.
One, one thing that Ms. Shipley brought up earlier was the, the people, the kids who have perhaps gotten past, and, and I know there are just a few of them, but the ones who have gotten maybe into IM three by the time they're freshmen in high school, it's difficult, it could be difficult to give those kids three years of math. What is the solution to that if, if somebody, if one of those kids doesn't want to take calcu- doesn't want to take calculus, but they're in IM three already, then they'd be going to pre-calculus? Or is that not, is, maybe that's not, not something to worry about? Okay.
And then doing it, like a start college now, or whatever.
Sure, sure.
I just, I, I don't know. I hear our, you know, our mission statement of inspiring success that focuses on our student needs. I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate the work that's been done in terms of, you know, the changes you made to pre-calc, you know, the honors versus regular. I, I hesitate to make yet another change without, like, having that, how am I trying to say this? I, I'm all for adding an AP pre-calc class. I think our students who want to take that should have that opportunity. I think we, as a district, support offering as many AP classes as we can. It is helpful, if a college accepts it as credit, to go into college with that. And even if a college doesn't accept it as credit, to have that confidence in you, like, oh yeah, I took this class, I have it, when you walk into your first lecture hall at college. But we, not all of our kids are going to college, that's one thing. And not all of our kids are ready for that level of, you know, whether it's classroom rigor or just in, you know, generalized sense of, wow, I'm taking a college class, I'm really freaked out by that, you know, whatever it is. I think until we know exactly what that AP class is looking like, I think we owe it to our students to, to continue offering another level for that fourth year of math. When we know four years of math is really important, I, I'm just going to stick with that.
See, I, I think that becomes down to managing, I, I hope it comes down to managing classes in, managing classes and tests in, in, at the high school level, where we are, where during AP test time, we're managing those tests so that the kids aren't taking, they're taking, if they have three AP tests in a week, they don't have tests in another class that same week.
But it's not just the week of AP tests. I mean, if you're taking an AP class, your whole year is a stressful, you know, more, like a rigorous, you know, it's not just, oh, it's, you know, it's bad that week, I don't want to take an AP, you know, I have two or three AP tests that week, but I also have this, I don't know, history, whatever your non-AP class is, a test that week. It's not just about the test that week, it's an entire year of learning that is, you know, AP levels, college level. I mean, even a college kid doesn't take seven classes, you know, our juniors are probably all taking seven different classes. If three or four of them are AP, that's a full load in college, is three or four college-level classes. I think we're, like, we're asking our kids to do too much. And we are already seeing kids who have mental health struggles, we don't need to add to that by putting all this, you know, additional pressure on them, if they don't want it. If they want it, great. Go ahead, Linda, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, we could just, to your point, offer the two, two options, regular pre-calc and AP, and let the numbers determine what happens. If there are not enough numbers, the class doesn't happen, and you just naturally go over to the. And that can happen also, I mean, you're almost predicting that's what's going to happen, but we can just let it happen. Let the student choice be there.
I, I feel like one of the things we've asked the curriculum department to do about three years ago was to do this leveling up that we're now seeing, that we're now seeing brought before us. And we've had, we've had really good success. The kids have had really good success with pre-AP chemistry, with pre-AP biology. The science, the science numbers are going up in the ACT test. You know, the, the, the IM classes are, have leveled up, and, and they're getting these kids more ready for these classes. We're, we're moving into, we're moving into pre-AP literacy classes, so that kids are ready for these, so that, so that all kids are ready for these classes. And we're seeing, we're seeing really good results. And part of those results are the state report card last year, in which we saw where three, where, and maybe you can help me with this, Mr. Blessington, but, but there was a, on page, on the FHA state, FHS state report card, where, where a three was a year's, was a year's growth. And in almost all areas, we had more than, our, our students had more than three. I'm not saying that's all because of this, I'm saying it's helping. The results show that this was, that this leveling up was the way to go. And you're suggesting that we, that we do these things, and I'm suggesting that we, that we trust that what you're suggesting is the right thing to do. And we've seen that the results have been there. And we, and we trust that going forward, the results are going to continue to go there. And we, and we trust that going forward, the results are gonna continue to go there.
I would hope that the endpoint of leveling up, and I'm, okay, don't sound snarky, is not to have all of our upper level classes be AP only classes. And that's what this looks like. And so, that's ultimately kind of my line of this, and I know you've said to me that this is a different kind of AP class, but I just need to see that proved out.
Well, and I, I appreciate leveling up, and I think we owe it to all of our students to give them the best academic experience they can have. But at some point, to your point, Angie, do we level up to the point where there is nowhere else to go? And is every kid, is, you know, what do we have, fifteen hundred students at the high school? Is every kid ready to be at that level up? Like, I just, I, I haven't, I don't know.
Maybe we'll find that we.
We'd probably have to revisit the topic of leveling up.
Maybe we'll, maybe we'll find that we need scaffolding at, at the leveling up.
And, and one, and I don't know if this changes anything, but just to give scale to this, two hundred and fifty students are taking pre calc right now. Like, that's what we're talking about, so, you know, we're talking about.
That's a lot.
A sixth of our students.
Well, and that's, yeah, two hundred and fifty students, you know, every year, are.
But that means a thousand out of the fif, out of the fifteen hundred students in high school will take it, likely.
I mean, out of the two fifty, probably about half are juniors, so.
I.
All right.
Can I make a motion, is that, can I do that? Cuz I would like to make a motion that we approve adding the AP pre calculus, and eliminate calculus, which we haven't even really talked about, but I think what we heard was that the calculus is a college level class, just like AP. But my motion would be to approve adding the AP pre calculus, eliminate calculus for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Can we do them one at a time? I, I'd like to, I, I need to amend your motion, do we need a second at first?
What, please tell me what your motion was again.
I'd like to approve adding the AP pre calculus, and eliminate calculus for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. That would be my motion, in definition, that would mean maintaining the existing pre calculus.
Okay, I'm gonna second it, just so we can get moving here. I think, I, I would like to consider the three aspects of this proposal separately. Adding AP, pre calc, eliminating, pre calc, eliminating, calculus. So I would like to. There's three parts of what they suggested.
It is a lot, and it was not like, I mean, it came to us as AP pre calc approval, but it's actually approving one class, eliminating another class, and, and eliminating calculus. So I mean, it's, it really is three parts, it came to us as one, but.
Okay, so.
We have a motion and a second.
So we have a, we have a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Yes.
Cuz if we wanna amend it, we needed a second.
Okay. I was.
Were you gonna, were you gonna not?
No, I was gonna say, if we don't have a second, then we could.
Oh, shoot!
All right.
No, I withdraw my second.
Thank you, good suggestion, Linda. All right, so Angie, would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve AP, the addition of AP pre calculus in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
All right, that motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion?
Could you just repeat that motion one more time, please? I moved that we add AP pre calculus for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. That's it, just adding.
Yep. We're breaking it down into pieces.
All right, that motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Wackowski. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any further motions?
Eliminate calc.
I don't personally wanna eliminate calculus, for the same reason that I didn't wanna eliminate a, a regular pre calc.
I make the motion to eliminate calculus.
I second.
I feel less strongly on this one, because I can be convinced that calculus is by its very nature an unavoidably collegiate class.
My hesitation is just that he said, or you reported that he said it is taught differently, so there's a difference to a regular calculus than an AP calculus, but.
And there still are enough students to warrant at least one section of it next year. Mrs. Wackowski, your motion again, please?
To eliminate calculus.
For the twenty-four.
For the twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
This is all twenty-four, twenty-five?
Correct.
Correct.
Classes have already been scheduled for.
There's still AB and BC, which means, as a, you're doing it slower, or what does that mean?
So calc BC is essentially calc one and calc two in the span of a school year, so it's following more or less college pacing. There's some efficiencies when you can do both back to back. But then calc AP is the first calculus course that colleges offer across a whole year. So you would be able to take calc, um, calc three, if you finish calc BC at proficient level in college, that'd be your first college calc class. If you pass AP calc AB, then your first college calc class would be calc two.
So that is after AP pre calc?
Correct.
So this would be for those students who finish IM one, two, three.
And pre calc of some, right.
And pre calc of some form.
We'd be eliminating the calculus class, having only those two.
So once you finish.
Only in those two AP classes.
Once you finish either a regular or AP pre calc, your choice would be calc, AP calc AB, or AP calc BC?
Yes, correct.
No.
Or in theory, AP stats.
Right, yeah, AP stats is, is still there.
But calculus, as this class, is folded into some of these other ones? Or is it curriculum that's exclusive to that particular class?
The calculus standards are the calculus standards.
It's largely the same as the calculus AB, I assume.
And how many kids are involved?
So next year, the calculus class has an enrollment under thirty, I believe it's twenty-nine. So that'll be one section of students.
All right, motion has been made and seconded.
One more question.
Oh, please.
How many are in the AP calculus classes?
Currently, two sections of AB and two sections of BC will run next year, so four. In addition to two sections of AP stats.
So the majority of students take the AP, either AB or BC?
Next year, eighty percent.
Most of them will do that, but there are still some who want.
Essentially, out of those hundred and twenty-five juniors, a hundred of them go to the AP options for next year, and about twenty-five to thirty of them will go to the calc option.
And how long have we had this selection available to them? Has that changed at all, the? Have you seen movement?
At least four years. At least four years. Been here four years.
Eight years, and it, it's always been that distribution?
No, we have a declining interest.
Declining interest, okay.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Can we just repeat the motion, just because my brain is scrambled?
The motion is to eliminate calculus for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Correct, Mrs. Wackowski?
Yes.
All right. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Mo, motion carries, I believe that's six to one.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Good math.
I only heard you.
I have one.
All right, I, I would, I would like to make a motion to, to not have, to not offer pre calculus in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. To only have AP.
To eliminate it.
To eliminate, thank you.
I'll second it. That was Mrs. Wackowski. No, it was me. Eliminate pre calculus, correct?
The regular without the non AP.
Okay.
All right, so that would leave us with only AP pre calculus, which was the original motion. All right, any further discussion?
So if kids choose not to take the test, there is no difference in the curriculum, but they just don't have that anxiety of, I'm studying for a test.
Kids do not have to take the test.
Okay, and they would know that that's their, an option, cuz obviously, my daughter does.
Yeah, it's a passive opt-out, they have to sign up for the test. If they do nothing, they're not signed up for the test, so they have to make the choice to take it.
Okay, and whatever's in pre calculus now, is essentially what's in AP now, or coming.
So if we eliminate regular pre calculus, your only choice after doing IM one, two, and three, either A or B, would be to go to the AP, there would be no regular level pre calc class?
What percent of the AP calculus kids take the test?
I would say almost all of them, honestly, don't you think?
So is it like ninety-five percent, it's not like eighty?
We're discussing.
I don't know about that specifically, but we have a wide range of percentage that take the pre calculus.
Okay.
I think kids are very much guided, if you're signed up for the course, you might as well try it. Yeah.
That seems to be the case. All right, motion's been made and seconded, further, uh, has it been seconded, oh, you seconded it. So, I made the motion, seconded by Dr. Beer. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Nay.
You have to raise hands.
All right, yeah. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Yes. Dr. Beer?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackowski?
No.
Dr. Khan?
No.
Mrs. Sapursky?
No.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion fails by a vote of three to four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, mental, youth mental health report, Ms. Cody, please. It's Lorino, welcome.
Oh, you know what? Do you wanna just do it? I said, do you wanna just do it? Or, yeah, that would just be easier. All right. Thanks. Thank you. Uh, so, good evening, again, just to introduce, this is Kristin Lorino, the Student Services Coordinator, and we are here this evening just to provide an annual update to you on everything that we do to support the mental health and well-being of our students here in Franklin Public Schools. It is Mental Health Awareness Month in May, so again, the timing is right. And I was thinking back on this work, and this is work that we have been, that has evolved over the course of time. So I, Kristin and I were both on the original team that came together around recognizing that we had a need to develop and focus on social emotional learning for students. So, so we've been here, and we're excited just to share some of the highlights that we've done, or highlighting some of the work just for this year. Go ahead, yep. So this is the vision, and I just always like to re-ground in this again. So the original team that came together when we really thought about our purpose, this is what we developed. And, and as we thought about that vision, we really focused on a comprehensive school mental health system. So in order to have a comprehensive approach, there are three different areas that we focus on. So we start with the universal, so I will highlight some of our, we'll highlight some of the work that we've done in the air, universal area. In addition to really sharing some of the highlights that impact all of our students, we'll also share some of the highlights as far as the work that we do for students who need a little more help, and then those students who need intensive help as well. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, one of the areas that we focused on was de-escalation training. So I come every year in August, and I talk to you about that seclusion and restraint report. And that's always very difficult to look at, that data, because there are students behind that. So there is specific training that we provide staff members every year to really work to de-escalate students and keep them safe in those times when they are in like, clear and present imminent danger, putting themselves at harm or others. So what we did over the course of time is we reviewed that data and our training, and thought about just approaching it in a different way, and how that could have a positive impact on students. So in August, we revamped our de-escalation training that we provide, and we really, like, focused on, like, co-regulation, so helping staff members understand how their emotions, their language, their actions really can influence a student's behavior and experience, either positively or negatively. We focused on, like, different triggers, using common language and common strategies. And so, again, we had every staff member trained, including our, like, our custodial staff, educational assistants, teachers, so every, really, every adult in the district. And I didn't put it in, in the report, but we have really received, we've seen some improvements, I would say, to our seclusion and restraints, like, those numbers have decreased, and so I would like, and like to contribute some of that to this work. We also provided specific professional development sessions this year. So in the gear up sessions, we've gave options, and there were many staff members who opted to learn more about the social and emotional learning strategies, and again, what they can implement with their own classrooms. So some of them were conscious discipline, restorative practices, so there were different topics. And again, we had many people sign up and choose those sessions, and we did have a very positive response as far as feeling like it was applicable, and they could use it with their students immediately. We also had the mental health grant funding that was utilized to, originally, it was, we were focusing on a suicide intervention at the high school, but because we have changed the way that we've provided professional development for staff, we could no longer provide the level of training we needed because of needing to pull, like, teachers and higher subs. So we reallocated that funding to provide the resources. So every classroom in the school has either, you can call them calming corners or safe spaces. So in those spaces, like, we try to teach kids different strategies to understand when their emotions are changing, or when they need a break, and then we provide that space, and, and really help kids understand how they can use some of what's there to help them just, you know, take that break that they need, and then return back to class, so to, to regulate. So that's happening in, in all of our classrooms. And then we also have engaged in a universal screener pilot. I'm gonna let Kristin talk a little bit more about that.
So, as some of you may remember, last year. Pretty loud. As some of you remembered last year at this time, we talked about how, when it comes to the need, the social, emotional, mental health needs, we don't always have the same type of data that we have in terms of academics to identify which students may be in need of additional support, in the same way we do as, you know, diagnostic assessments for reading, we have our map screener, all of that. So we relied on things formerly like health room visits, attendance, you know, really what we could see outwardly in behavior, but it was very hard for us to identify maybe some internalizing things that students may be feeling, such as, you know, anxiety or more depressive type feelings. So last year, in the spring, we engaged in a very small pilot of two different screeners that could help us identify students potentially in need. And then this year, we opted to move forward with screening our third and sixth grade students with one of the screeners that is probably one of the more popular screeners in the social emotional learning screener world, I guess you could say. This year, we did a screener of all third and sixth graders in the fall, and then in the spring as well, and have analyzed that data. So what we really found overall is that, a positive was that students that were identified as maybe higher risk or needing some more support through that screener, many of them, we were providing some sort of supports for. However, there were additional students that were identified through that, that teams then came together, problem solved around that student's needs, created interventions, et cetera. So we saw that there was some confirmation in what we were already doing, but there was an value add in terms of screening additional students. Similarly, at the high school, at the ninth grade level. Similarly, at the high school, at the ninth grade level, there, the ninth graders do engage in their health classes around signs of suicide and helping them identify and understand some mental health needs and how to respond to that. So they engaged in a pilot of a brief depression screener to, again, understand and respond and try to be proactive in identifying students who may be in need of support. And they were very strategic about how they did that, and they did have quite, I won't say quite a few, a few students that were not on their radar, that were having some thoughts of suicide, that they were then able to intervene and provide, you know, either school-based supports or refer them to community supports. So we found, again, that these screeners, there's been a value add. So our plan moving forward is we do want to continue to use the screener on a larger scale and adopt like this is a screening protocol for our students. In terms of like student and family response, like students at the, especially in the third and sixth grade level, students indicated that they enjoyed being able to share something about themselves and answer questions and that it was easy, you know, it's not the same as a MAP test. So there was a, I guess, a positive anecdotal response from students. We did not have a lot of families did have the option to opt out. We only had very few families that opted out, so. And then other families did ask questions, and we were very open about providing here the exact questions your child will be answered and answering, and then for families that wanted to go over the results, they did go over the results. So we do look to move forward with applying that a protocol for grades two through eight with the screener that we piloted this year. And then continuing this year, it was only a few classes of grade, of ninth graders that engaged in that depression screener, and we want to move to doing all of ninth grade. And then the high school team will evaluate, you know, whether there's a need to do that at other grade levels, but it's kind of like slowly scaling up. And then another action that we'll talk about more later is we did apply for the school-based mental health grant for the twenty-three to twenty-five school years, so we won't find out about that, but we'll talk to you about key priorities in a little bit. Any questions about the screener before you?
I was just wondering when the parents were notified and how, if there were concerning results on those screenings? Like how did, how did that look?
So at the elementary, third and sixth grade level, so they were notified, I think it was like a two to three week lead time that the screener was happening. And then if there were results, so some of the students, again, if they were already receiving some sort of intervention in contact with Student Services staff, there may have not been explicit follow-up just related to that screener. But if a student came onto the radar and whenever we bring a problem-solving team together to identify intervention, that is when a parent would be notified.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
How large is the grant?
What was the question?
How large is the grant that you applied for?
About the same, sixty-four thousand, maybe?
That's fine, that's a good enough number.
Yes. It was very similar to what we applied for these last few years when we crunched the numbers. This time, we didn't have to submit a full budget. It was a more, we just had estimates until we're actually approved for the grant, but.
So even with the universal screener, like this recommendation is based on the feedback from those who were involved in the pilots and the Student Services staff. But that's also something, again, we were, people were a little anxious about doing that screener initially, like kind of concerned about being able to respond to whatever we find. And so it was, again, beneficial to see that we were pretty well aligned. But again, we still have to talk, you know, as a district team about, like, I mean, we think we're gonna do it two days a week or two, two times a year, but is that too much or not enough? And so we will learn, I think, more about that as we, you know, continue to, to use that data to inform our practice, so.
I'm sorry.
No, please go.
When you talk about like scaling up the universal screener at like a high school level, is that something you would need more like grant funding for, or is that something that is more of a staffing thing? Like, how would you decide when to do that? I just, I guess I'm feeling like it would be a good idea to screen maybe those stressed-out juniors or?
It would be more of a staffing thing as far as the screener itself, that screener doesn't cost money in terms of that, that we, I guess that I was made aware of at the high school. It didn't cost money. It was more, it was just a very strategic response, because when they did the screener, they needed to make sure that Student Services staff were available immediately, as well as administrators, because there were a couple of students that if they indicated they had a plan, that they needed to be followed up with immediately. And then there was a few that maybe had some like at-risk score, so they had very clear cutoffs in terms of these are the students we have to follow up before they leave school for today. And so they had a process and protocol, so it's more understanding. We did that in a few ninth grade classes, so when we do it as ninth grade as a whole, what does that response look like? And then, you know, again, making sure that we are able to respond to, to those needs, so.
It's more of a planning than a budgetary kind of thing?
Yes, yep, at that level. Whereas at the elementary, it's both, because there still is a response needed, although the questions are not as urgent, I guess I would say, for the elementary. They're more of an indicator of social academic behavioral functioning, whereas at the high school, those are very specific to depression risk or suicide risk. So they're, they're more of an urgent response, whereas at the elementary, it's more looking at that data and saying, okay, we need to get a team around this student if they weren't already receiving some sort of supports. And then just in terms of additional proactive universal supports, we continue to, I know many of you have heard about youth mental health first aid, we continue to offer that course to both staff and community members. And that's just a course that you can think of as analogous to physical first aid, that we're teaching individuals how to recognize signs and symptoms of mental health concerns as they're arising, and then giving them a toolset of how to respond and refer to potentially appropriate resources. So we continue to offer that. It's been, we've had the goal of, for the last two years, a part of the grant was to train one hundred and fifty individuals. What's been a challenge is with staff, they're engaging in this course in the evening. Originally, we put in grant funding for guest teachers, and that's just not possible anymore. So teach staff who engage in this course, they do a self-paced portion on their own for, they do get reimbursed, but a self-paced portion on their own and then do come for an evening. So myself and their two other trainers teach that course in the evening. So it's just less staff than I think you would anticipate, just for a variety of reasons. We do have a great demand continued in the community. We just recently trained some of our, some fire, our school resource officers, some additional fire staff. One challenge that we've noticed with the community is that self-paced portion, we always tend to have a waiting list for the class going into it, and then as we get closer to the course, people don't complete that self-paced portion, and then they can't really engage in the rest of it. So as a trainer team, we're going to look to up our training so that we can, again, offer an eight-hour in-person course so that there's not that pre-work requirement that could be a barrier for our community members. But parents continue to be very interested, and those have been some of my favorite classes to teach, because they really have a lot of questions and I think feel a lot of value and empowered by engaging in that course.
Is this just youth-based? It's not just general mental health?
This is a very youth-specific course, so the organization itself, so the National Counter for Mental Wellbeing has three different types of courses. So they have a youth mental health first aid course that's targeted at understanding adolescence and typical adolescent development versus, you know, what could be potentially indicating a need for more. There is an adult mental health first aid course that is taught and offered, organizations offer it, offer it to the community. And then we'll talk a little bit about two, there is a teen, like a peer-to-peer mental health first aid course, and that is something that we want to seek grant funding for, to be able to train some of our high school students. Again, like empower them to recognize signs and symptoms and know how to intervene with their peers.
We also have continued with professional development of our Student Services staff. And one example of that was, we saw the need for training around selective mutism. So it's kind of a unique area where, you know, we were able to, again, provide that training, and it was, I think, really well-received. We had lots of staff members attend, and we do have, you know, we had students in several schools, you know, that were impacted then because of that. And then the check and connect training has been, had a significant impact this year. I would say K-12 as well, and I'll let Kristin just speak to that, too.
Yep, so check and connect is an intervention, and it, and it's basically a mentor-mentee type intervention where you're connecting an adult with a student who may be struggling with like academic, or just engagement in school attendance, and then academic or behavioral struggles. And it's really to connect them with a positive adult. That adult then learns a lot of strategies to help them goal-set and increase that engagement and progress in school. And so that is an intervention that has been, was identified by our Student Services staff as a need, because they want to be able to expand interventions that we provide beyond just them and their expertise. So this is an intervention that trained teachers can provide. And so like, for example, at the high school, as part of their graduation rate improvement plan, check and connect is one of their key strategies to increase graduation rates for students with IEPs. And so they have, their leadership team is all trained, they're all trained as mentors, and so they identified students in need of this. And so they have teachers, they have Student Service staff, administrators, all paired up with students in the building, and they have seen incredibly positive outcomes in terms of increased attendance, increased grades, or just at least increased connection to an adult where they have somebody to go to. So that, we have like fifty-four people that were trained across K through twelve in this intervention, and we're implementing it. And that is something we want to continue if there is additional interest in, in getting people trained in that intervention, then we would do that.
And part of that is understanding how to connect with families in sort of non-traditional ways, you know? And I was at the, the high school, school improvement team meeting last night, and there was a big focus on just where we are right now with our student, the mentor-mentee relationships. And it was, it was a great, a great experience just hearing, again, where like the individual students and how they were impacted and what some of those struggles were. And you could see that the mentor-mentee relationships, those are a two-year commitment, and you can definitely see why, based on just, you know, some of what was shared during the reflection time, so it's pretty powerful.
And they aren't necessarily a teacher or staff member that that student would come into contact with, so it could be, could or cannot be somebody that they do so.
And how do they pick the students?
So at the high school level, so through, I would say at the elementary through eighth grade level, they're looking at those indicators of students in need of support, so just identifying if they're already struggling. We have kind of specific criteria around like attendance, behavior incidents, other pieces. At the high school level, they really looked at all of their at-risk data, and they kind of prioritize students in a very strategic way. I wish Mr. Jonas was here, because he could, they went through a very explicit process. They even took student names off to like match students, so it was really looking a lot of, a lot of data in terms of grades, attendance, and all of those.
Could a parent ever say, I want to, my child to be a part of this? Or is it really all just data-driven and?
We might get there at some point. At this point, we, it was more students identified through our lens, but family engagement and parent input is a huge part of that. And sometimes we do have students who are referred for the need of additional support by families, because obviously families have great insight into what's happening to students that we don't. I would say that's at all levels, and then we would align them to an appropriate intervention based on kind of what we learned from that family, and that could include check and connect. It could include some other intervention with a student staff member, maybe a small group, or it could include like a referral to outside community resource. So we're not there yet where it's like, hey, if you want your student, just given the number of mentors and the commitment, and we're still in those stages, but it could, it could come from a parent concern.
So speaking of community partnerships and outside resources.
So just an update, our student and family assistance program was new last, again, like last spring at this time. And so just as a reminder, that is where families can, through Aurora, can access four free sessions per issue related to mental health concerns. It can also be related to other things like financial support, legal support. But generally, you know, we have advertised it for the mental health support piece of it. So since we've onboarded this partnership, we've had sixty families access the services, which actually is a bit higher when we did some research with other districts, is how many people actually access it. This is a bit higher for like our first year of doing it. And the, they did break down some of the data for us, and the services provided really have been assessment and counseling related to anxiety, depression, relationships, grief, trauma, alcohol and drug. We have had a few, one or two administrative referrals. We can refer students for disciplinary reasons related to, I guess, part of their agreements to seek these services. So we have used it for that, just very minimally. I think we've had more success just encouraging families to reach out and access this resource. So it's been a positive, I guess, value add.
And that's through the Get Kids Ahead funding. So we have that for another year, and then I think we'll make another decision. Hopefully we'll, that funding will continue.
And then, go to the next one, yep. And then we continue to have our partnership with Clinical Psychology Associates, where they have in, they have office locations within Countrydale, Pleasant View, the middle school, and the high school. And I think the numbers speak for themselves in terms of how many families have been able to access these services. So over time, we've had three hundred and thirty-six students or families receive support, and we still have, we have had many discharged, and ultimately, that's the goal of therapy, just like it's the goal of, you know, medical support, is that you eventually are discharged from that. But you see that we still have many ongoing therapeutic relationships. In the last year, I will say, there was a little bit of a slow, there was a huge influx, I think, post-pandemic in terms of the Clinical Psychology Associates getting a ton of new referrals, and that's slowed a little bit, just when I looked at the increase over the years. But my guess is, again, that's like more access to support, things have calmed down a bit. But it still continues to be a very valued partnership, and they collaborate with our staff around students when, when appropriate.
How long do they wait to get their first appointment?
It's pretty quick. There has been a waiting list during short periods of time, but they are very wonderful about assessing their need for staff, and then they add staff. I don't think, from what I gather, the feedback I've received, there's ever been more than like a month waiting for that first appointment. Typically, it's been less. And that still is a lot, but that has been only during certain periods where they have had a large influx and then haven't, that they've had that type of delay. Typically, that has not been the case, though.
And just anecdotally, from a medical perspective, if you're going through like your children's hospital, pediatrician, you're waiting five to six months right now? Unless you're having, like unless you are urgently a danger to yourself or others, you're waiting five to six months.
And it has been, I think it's been, it's, it's much more common, I think, for families to reach out or as you're working through some difficult times with families, like often, they will say, I am working with Carolyn from, at such and such a school, and so, you know, this person will be part of that student's team as we're working through things as well. And that collaboration between the therapist and the school staff is, you know, parents support that, too. So I think that's been really beneficial for our, our families.
And they, they have been wonderful about responding to what our families' needs are. They've also, you know, had staff leave and had, and they've responded, and they do have a location nearby. They're in some other local, like local school districts, so I think they've been pretty wonderful given like the demand for mental health support.
Okay, and so this is just a quick reminder that we did apply for the next cycle of the School-Based Mental Health Grant. So we're gonna focus on those few areas that we mentioned earlier, the anxiety, the prolonged depression, or sadness, depression. And then that, the piece about helping students understand how to identify needs and then seek out that support. So that speaks to, it's really just taking things to that next level, as far as what we're already implementing. Questions?
I, I appreciate what we've, what we've done in the last couple of years with these grants and getting them, getting them scaled up to more students and kind of, kind of leading the way in getting some of this, in getting that, some of this stuff done. And I really appreciate the partnerships we have with families and making sure that the families are part of the decision-making process and they're never, they're, they're never behind. We, the community asked us to spend some of our S.R. money on mental health, and we've gotten some grants. Should that money not continue to come in, what, what will happen in the next couple of years? Because that federal money was, was one time.
So part of this is training, and like the training and the resources, you know, we hope will just become part of, you know, how we work with students, but we know that staff members will also come and go. But I think as far as these partnerships, you know, that would be, I mean CPA is, like that's not grant-funded. But as far as Aurora, that would be a conversation, you know, that we would have. If this is a priority to us as a district, then we'll continue to, you know, provide the support for this and build that into our ongoing budget, and I don't know if it's been in or Mr. Corley wants.
I think you said it well, like it'll be a high priority, it's in demand, it's being used. We're seeing that there are sixty families that have accessed it, and that's like what we'll keep looking at. It's nice to have both offerings and just see how that looks, right? And talk to the schools, too, like breaking down that data. And other districts, too, we've talked about like even coming out of building budget. It's just prioritization, right? If we say we're about wellness and serving families, then we'll make it a priority in the budget.
I just appreciate the work we've done on this, because it appears that we're ahead of the curve, which, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristin.
Does anybody else have any questions? I didn't think so. I didn't think so. Just wanted to ask. Thank you. Uh, preliminary budget assumptions for twenty-three, twenty-four, Mr. Karo, please.
So we talked in January, um, we brought kind of the very broad strokes preliminary budget. Um, not a ton has changed since then, um, as far as our assumptions. So um, currently in the first two bullets on revenues, the revenue limit categorical aid, um, those represent about eighty-seven point six-four percent of our budget over the last ten years. Um, so at this point in time, we are estimating a two-hundred-dollar addition per student to the revenue limit. Um, with an additional twelve F T Es, so full-time equivalent students is really how the um, D P I calculates that. But students who would sit in our desks twelve times. But it's important to note, if we increase twelve in one year, that's really divided over three years because it uses a three-year rolling um, average. So while we're, we anticipate increasing by twelve, we're really only four students' worth of new dollars um, on the revenue limit. Uh, but we anticipate it going up by two-hundred dollars and the categorical aid going up by a hundred fifty. I have really no idea, cause the state has provided no indication of how they plan. We're very confident they're going to provide something. We're actually very confident they're going to provide um, a fairly reasonable increase, given the last uh, biennium of zero, zero for both of these categories and a, a heavy reliance on the federal aid. Um, but I really have no indication of how it's going to be split up. Um, from our purposes, obviously if it's added to the revenue limit per member, that'll have some property tax implication. If it's just categorical aid, that'll just all be state aid provided to us. Even though our property value rose ten percent, the state went up about fourteen percent in general. Um, so that would tend to put us with a little bit more state aid um, than we had. But because it rose so high, we're still probably at a fifty-fifty split on the revenue limit between what'll be property taxes and what'll be state aid. So we'll watch that closely. At this point, truthfully, I'll be honest with you when I tell you, I really don't care where it comes, we just need it to come. Um, in most years, I do care where it comes, if it falls within the revenue limit or categorical aid. But at this point, we need the revenue to help make our budget operate. Um, open enrollment uh, is another large bucket for us. Um, board approved eighty-one seats back in January. We had two-hundred-and-fifty-two applications, but only a hundred-and-fifty-five of those fall where we have seats available. Um, and we're estimating based on where those seats are available and the number of applications that fall. So for instance, I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but if we have ten seats available in first grade and thirty people applied, we're pretty sure we're getting all ten. If we have ten seats available in first grade and five people apply, we're probably not getting all five. We'd estimate three or four, um, something around that range. So right now, we've estimated an additional twenty-two over what we currently have this year. Um, and this year, we're somewhere in the four-hundred range, um, so a little bit more um, than last year.
What question?
Sure. Anytime you want, Linda, you jump right in.
Thank you. It looks like in January you had estimated open enrollment to be reduced by thirty, and now you're adding twenty-two.
Based on the number of applications that have come in and where they fall based on the grade level.
That window closed in between, so we wouldn't have had those numbers yet at that time.
Yeah. When I developed those, we hadn't even set board seat, I mean, we officially approved board seats. But when I developed those numbers, we hadn't set board seats. And we're just taking a look at a pretty large uh, twelfth grade class falling off of forty-two-ish, I think. Um, falling off and typically what gets added on. Um, but based on where the applications are in comparison to open seats, um, we have some grade levels where we have ten, twelve seats available and we have thirty applications in that grade level. So we're pretty confident we're gonna fill them all.
And so that's great news, this version of the budget versus the last version we saw.
Uh, well, these are just our.
More revenue.
Our um, assumptions at this point, I haven't wrapped it all up. I'm hoping to have that for the twenty-fourth um, is the goal, otherwise we'll see it in Ju- in June again. Um, special education aid, um, we're still um, budgeting at forty-five percent this year. But again, this is all up in the air uh, with the state. Again, we've get, we've had strong indication that dollars will be coming in. We haven't had a strong indication whether it will be revenue limit, categorical aid or special aid. Really, all of those are going to fall in the same bucket as far as the state is concerned. How they divvy them up to us um, is important from a budgeting standpoint. But again, if they said, we're not going to provide any special education aid, but we're going to take your categorical aid and go up a thousand dollars, that'd be great. Wonderful. I, I would just send us some dollars to help us keep moving. Um, I know one of the questions that came up, kind of, I guess, not entirely related to this, but to the special uh, or to the state legislator was um, comparing a private business versus us as a public um, entity. Um, and the idea, well, you could just, just raise more revenue. And unfortunately, because education costs more on a year-to-year basis, we can't just charge more for education cause education is supposed to be a free public piece. So um, we really do rely heavily on state aid to, in some capacity to um, help us fund all the things that we're doing. Um, salary and benefits, as we talked about in January, C P I, which was certified based on the December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two date, um, eight percent. At this point, we're still estimating four. Um, we're hoping to climb that as high as possible, but that, again, a lot of that is determining on what's going to happen at the state level. So um, I don't want to get too excited and say we could do five, six, anything up. Four, I'm pretty confident we can make fit in with the um, assumptions that we have.
Just a quick question, what's W E R C?
Uh, work is Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission or something like that? Is that, I know it's the employment, Wisconsin Employment Commission, I can't remember exactly what the R is. Um, but essentially they set um, negotiations for public unions and um, work with that particular group. Um, our benefits, we'll talk about in the next one a little bit more. But um, we're estimating ten percent for health. Um, eight-point-eight percent increase would keep us flat, we're gonna go with ten. Um, we'll talk about that in the health piece. Um, dental's going up two percent. And then I just added a couple of notes here, our long-term capital improvement trust fund, right now currently has about two hu- uh, point four million dollars. We've earmarked seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred-and-fifty for the potential of the board approving the bids that come in for the clinic alternate.
I think I could, what's the number?
Uh, it's about two-point-four million, um, I believe. Um, and then we are doing an elementary school project. So last summer, the high school had TVs put in for teachers to use as part of their instructional practice. Um, at the elementary level, and those were already established in Forest Park when that was built. Um, at the elementary level, we have smart boards everywhere, but those have really ridden their full life. Um, and a lot of them, so anytime you like bump them, sometimes we can't restart them, sometimes they just don't work and the parts aren't available really. So we're moving with the TV, moving forward with the TV project um, at the elementary level that we're gonna fund out of Fund Forty-Six.
So how, how old are those?
I have no idea, but I would guess.
When my kid was in kindergarten, so.
I, I had a smart board many, many moons ago, so I would say fifteen, probably.
We as a P T O raised a lot of money for smart boards back in the, yeah, two thousand six.
Early aughts.
And how long, the TVs, are they expected to last? Is this like a one-time refresh or?
Uh, certainly not one time, cause every TV has a life, but oh my gosh. Um, I, at least ten years, I would assume for the average television. Um, I would assume many will last significantly longer than that.
And parts will be available.
Yeah, and, and TVs continue to be cheaper and cheaper. A smart board was significantly more expensive when we purchased those fifteen years ago.
Smart boards come with technology and things like that that have an expense. So there won't be that expense with using a TV. Now we have better capabilities to cast in things from the laptops and from the student devices. So like Andy said, they're gonna have to get replaced at some point. It's also about usage, like some classrooms are used more than others.
Right. Um, uh, fund balance um, continues to uh, remain steady year over year. You're gonna see a value in there of nine-point-three million dollars. So when I think of fund balance, we would look at it in June and it's probably somewhere around thirty million dollars. But truthfully, it ebbs and flows over the course of the year. November thirtieth is um, technically our low point. It probably ebbs and flows somewhere between November twenty-fifth and December third, when our next state aid payment comes in. Um, but nine-point-three is the amount that I use. That's really what's left when we get to our lowest valley, kind of in the ebbs and flows, right? So if the board were to say, we want to spend fifteen million on a building project and by all means you could do that, that'd be great. We would have to borrow five-point-seven million during the course of the year to make our expenses meet, right? So even if we look at June thirtieth, it says thirty million dollars. You want to spend fifteen million, we'd be borrowing cash during the course of the year to make it work. So about nine-point-three is our, our value. But really, our, our fund balance too has provided a great deal of dollars for us this year. So as of May third, we had, we've earned four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars in interest on that. Um, so if we think about that in terms of quantifiable dollars, we're looking at five, six, seven teachers in the classroom with a fully benefited teacher. And if they're not taking full benefits, we have more staff members. So it provides quantifiable dollars. Is that gonna happen every year? Obviously, no, we're in a great interest, particular period of time. Um, but right now, it's providing some significant interest and we anticipate that happening for next year as well.
Yes, but have we budgeted that though? We've never, I've never seen it much more than.
Uh, next year, we'll budget a significant amount, cause it, as long as the, the feds keep the interest rate high, interest rates from banking will stay in that four to five percent range for a significant period of time. And they have talked zero about reducing the uh, federal interest rate.
So where, I'm a, oh.
Go ahead.
So, so, simple question, I'm sure. So this nine-point-three million, that's not just like in some bank somewhere, obviously. But I mean, given bank failures and given, you know, economy, where is this money?
Um, so some of it is wrapped up in CDs. And so we typically buy those in two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increments, right?
Oh, okay.
Um, others are in a collateralized account. Um, so while the F D I C insured is up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, if you get them collateralized, you're insured for whatever you collateralize it for.
So it's rock-solid safe?
Yep, correct. Um, so that's kind of where all of the, all of the things we'll see in the preliminary budget are really based off of this. And I, the biennium budget isn't typically as stressful as it has been this time around. Um, it's typically a hurdle, but we have an idea of where that hurdle will, or I guess a stronger idea of where that hurdle will land. This year is just so up in the air, um, more so than it's ever been, so.
Question, you have a statement here about having asked all departments to utilize a zero-based process to make sure, what, what's that about? Is that different than in the past?
Uh, historically, significantly different. Um, so departments were all held in the business office and the business office would appoint dollars to particular accounts um, for departments. This year, I gave it to uh, Bob and Christine and Laura and said, you tell me what you need based on all the things your department thinks are gonna purchase this particular year. So that's kind of the starting point. So those have come in, they've trickled in over time. Um, some of them have taken longer to discern, like where should we actually budget this for? So um, something like HireVue, which is used for employee interviews, that's pretty easy, that's gonna go to Laura. But um, some of the curricular-based ones that have a technology component, does that get moved to technology? Does that get moved to curriculum, um, or teaching and learning to determine? So we've spent some time, or some of those uh, directors have spent some time negotiating, negotiating really where they're gonna go or who's gonna account for it. And ultimately, really, I'm a bottom-line person, so I really care, what is the bottom line overall? But if we were to keep all of that wrapped up in one circle, that's one large bottom line to take a look at, where we can now pass that out and say, Bob, you have teaching and learning, you're watching this bottom line. I'm helping you watch it, but you're really watching that. And Christine's watching the people's services bottom line and I'm helping Christine watch that. But getting people to where the dollars are, so that they're actually aware of what they're doing. Um, I, I kind of, the analogy would be, if I gave my son my credit card and told him to just be cautious with what you buy and only buy things you really need, but you're not gonna see the statement at the end of the month. If that were the case, it might do really well, might not do really well, but he's gonna have no idea what he's spending it on, right? So transitioning those components back to the piece. And then I watch the big pieces, obviously salary and benefits, that all falls on me. Um, some things that are district-wide, transportation doesn't fall into any director's purview. I'll watch that, right? That falls on me. Property and liability insurance doesn't fall in anybody's purview, covers the whole district, that's gonna fall on me. But buildings, directors, they're gonna manage their particular budgets. And then I'll work with them, but again, bottom-line person. So if you said you were gonna spend a hundred dollars on supplies, but it cost you a hundred-two, I don't necessarily care so much. But you need to know that that two dollars can't then be utilized somewhere else, or you're taking two dollars from somewhere else to do that. So budgets are really snapshots in time, right? So we're gonna, when the board officially approves it, at the second meeting in October, we're like snapshotting in time. Tomorrow, the front door of this office could fall off and now we're replacing a front door for thirty thousand dollars that we had and anticipated simply because it happened. So while it's a snapshot in time and we anticipate things are gonna ebb and flow throughout the course of the year and we might need way more salt because it snows way more.
So I have a, again, a simple, hopefully, simple question, but is there insurance? Like if the door falls off because of a hailstorm, i- is that insurance?
Well, because of a hailstorm, we probably could incorporate our property insurance. But if it were, we were just there and the cock gave way and the door fell out, that's not gonna be.
So like roofs, you know, that get damaged?
If they get damaged in a storm, yep, we can file an insurance claim.
Insurance, okay.
Um, but your typical roof repair, no, that's.
Right, just, yeah.
Wear and tear, age, all of those are factors in, in that particular, like using the roofing example.
So you did provide a one-pager in January that wasn't part of this presentation, but I'm just, I'm sure you got it, right? You have your one-pager, what is your bottom line looking like? Is it balanced budget at this point or what do you?
Uh, nope, it won't be balanced, it's still gonna be in the red. So part of that's gonna be figuring out where we think that's gonna come from. Um, some of it's waiting on to see what state aid is. But again, I gave everybody kind of the purview on that like zero-based budgeting process to say, this is, what do you need exactly? So um, when it comes down to brass tacks and we start talking about August and we're doing uh, um, the annual meeting, we're gonna wanna balance budget at that point and we're gonna wanna make sure it's balanced um, in October as well. But at this point, I wanna say it's a little bit more grand scale from the director's pur- uh, purview and what they're gonna need. In capital improvements, we're gonna see a dramatic increase, at least of what'll be projected in June. Um, and we'll take a look at that and I'll work with Mr. Daniels to make sure that that's a considerable component. We really start scaling that back as well. But right now, I wanna make sure we're gonna try and do everything we can. And then the state's gonna be a big component of, can we run that? Or do we wanna trade it for something else? So um, kinda to the last question you had with Christine's presentation, like what, what do we do when the federal dollar stock coming, stop coming in, right? So our budget's a prioritization list as well. So now we have to determine what's the priority on this. Is it capital improvement projects this year? Is it salaries for our staff members? Is it a mix?
I guess when you say zero base, I'm familiar with that, meaning that they submit budgets that have not increased, there's no increase.
That's not zero base, that's flat-base budgeting. So zero base is, I don't give you any dollars until you prove to me that you need something.
Oh, you get zero, okay.
So that's where they start building from the bottom up. And to use the teaching and learning Bob's gonna go through and say, don't, we're gonna do a math adoption next year at K-five. It's gonna cost X, Y and Z, cause it's on our adoption like timeline, right? And we're gonna need X, Y and Z for some new music instruments. So we're gonna put that in. So he's starting to build that from the bottom up. And Christine's staying to look at people's services and saying, if we didn't have the mental health grant, but we're gonna need this universal screener and we're gonna need the E A P and we're gonna need um, the, or the Student Assistance Program, the S A P, we're gonna need some of those components. She's building that from the bottom up versus just saying, you have a hundred thousand dollars, figure out what you're gonna do with it.
Do you, do you have some sort of assumption on, on what you think, what percentage of the budget is going to go to curriculum? Or what is likely to go to curriculum versus what is likely to go to um, buildings and grounds? Versus what is likely to go to?
So I started off with, nope, you tell me what you all need.
Okay.
Um, assuming this year, or uh, once the budget is done this year, we'll take a look at saying, we're gonna keep your allocation flat for next year, tell me if you can make that work. Once we figure out what it all is, right? So we'll start with that method next year. Uh, but this is really new for um, our directors who have been here to really have complete control of that budget and really set that budget versus having it provided to them in an allocation and then already line itemed out. So it's a new process that we're gonna have to go through. So there are gonna be some growing pains this year from a coding standpoint, like really simple things, a coding standpoint, making sure that we've accounted for everything. Um, so one of the key components that I have done is taken all of those director budgets that were last year housed in the same kind of component and taken a look at what is that historical value over the last few years? And then when they come back with the zero-based budgeting process, are we pretty close to that? Cause if we're not close to that, obviously we're missing something. We're, we're either missing something if we're too low, or we're overshooting if we're significantly high. And we're reasonably close on five and a half million dollars or something like that, we're within a few hundred thousand dollars. So we must be pretty close, right? So it's not like a blind shot in the dark and hope we make it work. It's, yep, we're gonna break it apart and do some comparisons along the way. Um, but again, I want them to control it and, and moving forward, have them control it as well.
You're not controlling at the building level though, are they?
Yep.
Principals are also getting there, but they wouldn't have a, a teacher's salary budget.
They have, for the most part, it's a supplies budget, some personal services or some, um, like ability to send their staff members to trainings and conferences and things like that. So in aggregate buildings and that including athletics, probably one point one million dollars, I think altogether. A couple of things like we'll talk, we'll talk about, I'll throw them out now. There's a state championship fund and that's just the one that sticks in my mind, right? And that was always controlled from this office, but Jordan spent all the money. So Jordan, we're going to take that dollar of that allocation and I'm just going to put it right in your budget so you can actually see and start figuring out when you allocate things for kids that go to state or teams or whatever. Here's your budget, you got to live within it. So it's really getting those dollars to allocate it to who's actually spending them. I'm not telling Jordan where state teams have to stay or people have to stay. I'm not booking hotel rooms or booking transportation, like that's all done at his level. So let's give those dollars back to him. On the fall play, spring musical, same thing, those are all housed up here. But Jordan and Tracy spent the dollars for them, so let's get the dollars to where the people are spending them so they can actually take a look at, am I landing within my allocation? And again, if you're not totally fine, but you have to realize that those dollars, whatever's over, is coming from somewhere else to make it up because the bottom line's the bottom line. That's the part that doesn't change.
Are you anticipating any staff being added with twelve residents and twenty-two, or the twenty-two should generate?
Uh, so adding thirty kids, no. Are we looking at adding staff? Yes, but not because we're anticipating thirty kids, it happens to be where they fall. So some elementary grade levels, like right now, what's projected to be there next year is taking, having us take a look at, do we need to add a teacher at a first grade level because we're at twenty-six and two classes? Do we need to take a look at adding a third teacher at that particular, but not because of thirty-four students? They're sprinkled like salt on popcorn.
Of your next report. What do you, um, well, you're going to be coming in May, the next meeting.
I'm hoping to have it done by the twenty-fourth, so I'm assembling it all now. So hopefully, we'll have that ready. If not, we'll bring it in June.
I mean, the fiscal year starts when?
July first.
Okay.
Thank you. Linda, anymore, anybody else? All right, health insurance update, please. Okay, so I'm just going to go to one slide. This is the most important slide of all of the things that are in here. I'm really going to raise it, it happens to be slide three. But we just want to take a look at this particular column, which is on the far right-hand side. The full, full column, it says percent of premium equivalent. If you go down to the light blue, hundred percent. So essentially, what that's telling us is every dollar we're collecting a premium, whether the district pays or employee pays, we're spending out for medical expenses. That can be doctor's visits, hospital visits, surgeries, prescription drugs. We're a self-funded plan, that's not good. Even if we were a fully funded plan, that's not good. So actuarial value, I think if you were to go a few slides down, our new healthcare consultant, Brown and Brown, estimates eight point eight percent. So if we increased our premiums by eight point eight percent, regardless of who's paying, but the total premium, that would put us at an actual value, actuarial value of a hundred percent for next year. I've asked them to give us premium rates at ten percent, so at least we can start the process of building a healthcare fund balance. So our healthcare spend is about eight million dollars in any given year, to use a nice round number. We want long-term to have about thirty-three percent of our healthcare spend in our health savings account. That thirty-three percent will provide you a ninety-nine percent actuarial valuation of two really historically bad years back to back and you not having to tap into any other dollars. So that's really the threshold we want to get to long-term. So on eight million dollars, it'd be about two point seven. Now, healthcare is going to continue to go up if we don't, if we don't make any changes to our health plan or health. It's really how do we direct people to high-quality care that's more affordable? So we're looking at some of those things and we've already installed some, the direct contract with MDI for imaging, direct contract with ATI for physical therapy. We're looking at direct contracting for osteos surgeries, bones, right? Doing those types of things, knee reconstructions and those types of things. We talked about the clinic, right? Having an onsite district clinic. We're going to review, is there an option for near-site options as well? So having direct contracts for near-site options, right? So even if we approve a clinic, our clinic won't be open twenty-four seven. So what happens to the person who has a strep throat at eight o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night for their child that can't sleep? Do we have some near-site options where we direct contract with them so that there's a cheaper rate? And we figure out how to do all of this by probably changing our health plan, but providing a whole bunch of free options along the way. And those free options are really what helps steer people to use those. So you always have the purview to do whatever you want, but if it's free for me to go to this specific clinic and I, then I can go pick up prescriptions over here and it's also free, chances are people are going to do that. It's really up to us and then Brown and Brown to help, well, really Brown and Brown to help Laura and I figure out where are those places that provide that high quality because I don't want to direct you to any clinic. I want you to go to the best one. Why? Because I want you to go there, get whatever it is taken care of and then we're good to go. Like, I don't want to like mince any words with that. And our direct contracts really focus on that particular piece, how do we find the best?
Question, so this is not year, this is only the year-to-date, correct?
This is July first through March thirty-first.
So not a full year, this could change a hundred percent?
Sure.
So it's, did they project, did our consultant project maybe?
No, but healthcare works on the last twenty-four months on a seventy-thirty basis. So your most recent twelve months, they consider seventy percent from casting forward. In the, the previous twelve months, they cast a thirty percent. So they're using twenty-four months of data to cast that eight point eight percent and help us figure out that actuarial value. So there's a bunch of really smart, smart number crunchers behind the scenes.
What, how did we finish last year?
About break even.
Because the report that we got this, a year ago at this time was.
Yeah, I saw that.
Was indicating like under ninety percent.
Yeah.
But we didn't finish that.
We broke about even last year.
So I guess the ten percent, well, how much fund balance do we have now allocated to?
None, zero.
Because do you plan on establishing a separate fund or how does this fund balance get?
We will account for it separately in our fund balance category. So there's, they're following the nine hundred thirty thousands for anybody that's a woofer nerd. But in any case, you make one of those, a specific account that's healthcare. So at the year-end, you take a look at all of your expenses, you take a look at all of your premiums and then you have to calculate what's called an IBNR, an incurred but not yet realized. So that's essentially all of the things that happened kind of in the last six weeks of your health plan that will get billed for in July and like the first two weeks of August. Typical healthcare billing is always in arrears, right? So they're going to calculate an actual ver, actuarial value of that. We have to plug that into the mix as well, pull out last year's IBNR and then we get kind of our true revenues to our true expenses comparison. Whatever the net is of that, assuming it's positive, that gets plugged into our kind of health savings account. It'll sit in our general fund balance, but when I take a look at it, I will break it apart. When it's presented to the board, it will get broken apart too. So if we were thinking about that nine point three million from before, since we have no fund balance in health, it's nine point three million dollars. If we had three hundred thousand dollars of health fund, that would look at nine million for this, three hundred thousand is health. So it will be presented in a different fashion so that we are always accounting for it and aware of it. And if we have overruns, assuming we have a balance, if we run over, expenses exceed premiums, it gets pulled from that healthcare fund balance rather than a new expense added to the district because we've done the diligence to create a health plan that will help us generate those funds year over year.
Did we have an IBNR last year?
Yep.
What was it?
Offhand, I don't know, but when you calculate the IBNR with our actual expenses, it netted us about even with premiums.
So.
I don't calculate an IBNR. This all goes to the actuarial.
Right, I know, but they give it a number.
Or actuary, and they calculate.
I just want to know what the number was, so maybe you can get that to me. Also, so the ten percent, but that's with no plan changes. We didn't think about adding any plan changes to bring that number down?
We sure did think about adding plan changes, but our healthcare consultant that we have, not good. So we needed to do that process first. Now we have a new healthcare consultant, Brown and Brown, as of March first. Between March first and them learning all the things about our plan, getting all the numbers, that takes a while on their end. For us to really vet changes at the end of April, beginning of May, bring them to the board for approval, have enough time to discuss and explain to our staff, we didn't feel was reasonable by July first. So our plan over the next six to eight months is really to study our health plan, figure out what is the plan laying forward. So the other piece that we were concerned about is if we make these changes, are they the right one without having enough time to study them? So another key component is not only making changes, which are necessary or if we, if we want to stay viable within our health plan are going to be necessary, but we also want to have a clear path of providing really great healthcare that's affordable, but then helping steer our staff members to what is that health plan? So if I need my shoulder replaced, I want to go see the best, best orthopedic surgeon. Can we find the best one who will do a direct contract with us?
Andrew, please.
I'm concerned about your statement that our previous healthcare consultant was not good. Like how did we, so we approved that previous health consultant. Can you be more specific about what defines not good and what like red flags we should have seen so that we cannot do that again?
Red flags you would have seen or none?
Okay.
You, you wouldn't have been privy to that. But like if we go through this slideshow a bit, I don't want to like beat this, but this is some benchmarking data that compares us to not only some educational, but just broad-spectrum health plan. Never saw any of that with the previous healthcare consultant. The only thing we saw on a month-to-month basis would have been something like this page two here, which is all good and grand because I track that. I'm like, the healthcare spend, I'm kind of a nerd on that. So I really like looking at those numbers and how they're broken apart and, and helping to cast forward. But that would have been the only thing. Laura and I would meet monthly with them and we would literally be six to ten minutes a month and we would discuss nothing of substance. And the, the part that really got me, and we'll slide down to this stop-loss projection here, was a discussion point by our previous healthcare consultant, sorry, I scrolled down there, but a, a point brought up by our previous healthcare consultant that we should not go out and market stop-loss because it really isn't great to stick, to change your stop-loss every year, so.
That's not even how it was presented to us when, when we approved this. Do you remember that meeting?
So with that being said, there's like twenty stop-loss carrier providers and we live in a great area, Milwaukee area, like is inundated with healthcare everywhere, right? There's like twenty stop-loss providers in the Milwaukee market. Stop-loss affects no one other than us as the business owner of the health plan. So when they said you shouldn't market it, like we got to move on. I, I can remember leaving it and going over to talk to Laura and going, I can't believe they just told us we shouldn't market stop-loss. We got to change, like this, I don't, I don't believe they're going to be best for us.
Well, I do want to read here from the report just as last year. Due to the strong plan performance with the move to self-funded with UMR, Horton was able to negotiate and secure a seven percent reduction in stop-loss premiums for the twenty-two, twenty-three plan year, which will reduce the district's premium by eighty-seven thousand.
All good and grand, we still ended up even. Like doesn't matter what happened, we're still ending up even. So we went out and we bid, well, I didn't, Brown and Brown did. We're actually going to change our stop-loss provider. Again, it affects no one, you don't get a new healthcare card, they have no ID, go to any doctor you want. We're moving to Voya at four point six percent. I'm sorry, four point one percent. You'll see the last option at four point six percent. The reason we didn't go with them, if you look at the bottom, they're not a UMR preferred vendor, which means UMR is going to charge us more per member, per month. So while we would pay four point six percent less in stop-loss, we'd pay more to have our health plan managed. So we don't do any billing, UMR does all that. UMR is a subsidiary of United Healthcare, it's all the same product, it's just a different name on it, right? They take care of all that billing. They're going to charge us more if we go with Vista, I don't even know why, I don't really care, they just are. So we ultimately chose Voya, four point one percent. We stayed at that hundred twenty-five thousand. So stop-loss has a specific premium or a specific amount, ours is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per person. They also have an aggregate amount, which typically will rest somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent of your total health plan. So our total health plan, again, eight million. So somewhere around like ten to ten and a half million dollars is our aggregate stop-loss. Well, with a thousand members at a hundred twenty-five thousand, we in theory could go up to twelve million five hundred thousand and have nobody hit the individual stop-loss. So that aggregate stop-loss is a really important component to that. And Voya will also provide us a premium rebate if we do well. We took a look at a couple of other options on here, you'll see a hundred thirty-five, a hundred forty-five thousand and they're going to obviously drop your premium the higher you're willing to go. So at the hundred forty-five thousand, it would drop our premium like another eighty-some thousand dollars, but we typically have five to six people hit our hundred twenty-five every year and they're not stopping at a hundred twenty-five. They're typically exceeding that by a fair amount. So in our estimation, if we went to one forty-five, it would cost us an extra hundred thousand dollars because those five people are going to make it there versus saving eighty-six or eighty-three or whatever it was. So we decided we're going to stay at one twenty-five, but we're going to switch the carrier.
Can you explain stop-loss, is that the amount which we spent on per individual, the maximum we spent? More than that, it's covered by?
Yep, so everything over a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is pushed back to the stop-loss provider and then they provide a rebate. So we still pay those bills out, but they give us whatever over a hundred twenty-five thousand, we just get paid, we just get reimbursed that particular piece. So it's really imperative of our Brown and Brown, our healthcare consultant with our direct contracts to make sure those are getting funneled through them to the stop-loss provider. Some of them we know, some we don't. ATI physical therapy, we don't know. But truthfully, we talked about, remember the healthcare circle? I go to the doctor, doctor says you need to see an orthopedic, you go to the orthopedic, orthopedic says we're going to get some x-rays, you get x-rays, we're going to send you to PT, they're going to do physical therapy, you're going to go back and see your orthopedic and then they're going to make a decision. So really, when we take a look at that wheel, that's somewhere between like twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars, we say we'll just pay the PT and call it even. But because of how our contract is with ATI and their direct contract and we don't know exactly who's going, we just know that people go and they just bill us for the amount. I'm really not concerned about that because it's not a great cost. But we do know people or everybody that does imaging at MDI will know everybody that gets a surgery when we have that too. So all of that Brown and Brown can then funnel to those specific people to make sure that's being attached to their stop-loss.
I have a question, can we go to the medical renewal rates? Is that the eight point eight percent? So that's what our consultant has recommended. I'm also looking at, we have three groups there, the PPO Plan four hundred and the PPO Plan two thousand.
Yep.
High-cost deductible as well as a sixty-five-plus retiree. It looks like there, there's different proposed rates there, twelve percent, five percent, twelve percent.
So that's the employee portion of what they pay. So if you're on the four hundred dollar plan, you pay twelve percent of the premium cost. If you're on the two thousand dollar plan, you pay five percent of the premium cost. The idea there is to incentivize people to choose that higher deductible plan and really help the plan out. Typically, people that go on the two thousand dollar plan, I don't think it's going to be a big surprise, are typically healthier than the people that are not choosing it or are a little bit more concerned with having to put out a two thousand dollar payment if I do have a surgery versus the four hundred dollars. So some of it is health, some of it is stability. But trying to incentivize people to take a look at that five, uh, two thousand dollar deductible.
And we always had that, not change that.
Always, I can't say always, but it, it was there last year.
What, what about a HMO plan? You don't have, we don't, we don't have a HMO because HMO are usually much more cheaper than the PPO because they have limited options, but.
So historically, from my conversations with Jim, the idea of a narrow network is essentially an HMO. A narrow network has not been viewed very positively here. I'm not going to say that, we're not going to take a look at that. So when you take a look at a narrow network, essentially you're saying, we only want you to go to Aurora or Freiter, name the network, it doesn't really matter. So what you do is what's called a disruption report. So you take a look at all of the people that go to everywhere that they go. And if we just choose Aurora, how many people are we affecting? If we just choose Freiter, how many people are we affecting? And some of that will help you make your decision. So if you live in like Beloit, you have Mercy Care and I can't think of what the other one, Dean.
Dean.
If you do a disruption report down there, Dean's probably like eighty-five percent of the healthcare spend. It might be worth that. Around here, I, our disruption report could be fifty-fifty. And if we choose one over the other or name any of the others, it could be thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three and we're affecting a whole bunch of people. So you have to weigh that into that HMO narrow network kind of discussion is how many people are we really going to affect? And then is the juice worth the squeeze? Maybe, maybe not.
Have you thought about, I know you, they recommended eight point eight percent to really break even and you bumped it to ten percent. So that means our employees are going to be paid ten percent more. But do we have to do the fund balance billing this year? But do we have to do the fund balance billing this year? Can we push that off? I mean, because we have a healthy fund balance. We don't need to necessarily segregate that and maybe go with, I mean, it's those kind of increases, we haven't seen that in last year it was 6.7% and we're projecting 5.5. Couldn't we just dial that back and help our employees out a little bit? I mean, you're looking at 4% increase on the salary side and you're hitting them with 8.8% increase on the health. Well, you want to go 10, but could we close that gap a little bit and think about not going to 10 and going to 8.8? I mean, the numbers work.
So 8.8 is, we'll just take a look at the first one. A single plan on the $400 is $10.18. At 10%, it's 11.55. So we're talking $1.37 per month. We're talking $15 is the change on a single plan, $400.
But there is an interesting question, though, what the healthcare consultants say in terms of what would be considered a healthy growth rate for developing this fund balance. It would be interesting to have, I'm sure they could just stick that little graph on there somewhere. Clearly, we would hope to have something at this point and we have nothing. So we're lagging behind. Just curious how, over what period of time they typically would hope that you achieve that 33%.
Yeah, in my previous district, we did it four years.
Four years.
I mean, typically, we don't, I mean, that's, you could go that way, but we have fund balance that will also impact that. And this, it'll go up and down. It'll go up and down. Some years will be good. We have, he hasn't even touched any plan changes. I mean, he talks about all the things that we can do that we haven't done yet to impact these numbers so that that fund balance will be there as we go forward. I'm just talking this year when we got, I mean, 8.8% and he might say it's only so much, but it's 8.8% and it's only 4% on the salary side. So can we do what we can? We don't need to pile up the fund balance this year.
It would be interesting to know also, as we're considering these various interventions that would hopefully limit the costs that we're seeing by directing our employees to, you know, perhaps utilize certain providers or if we did have a health clinic. It would be interesting if we could somehow break out where we would expect to see those savings to monitor if we are in fact achieving the goals that we are trying to.
They'll be able to do that.
Oh, that makes me so happy.
I was wondering the same. And they would provide that ahead of time so that we can see how that model benefits us as opposed to after the fact, we can, we will see that this is the payoff. This is the investment. This is the payoff over this time.
So when we head to choosing a clinic vendor, so let's assume, let's like play that one all the way out, right? The board's going to approve us to build the clinic. That's going to take still 12 months from the time you would approve it. So we're going to go out and we're going to start interviewing clinic vendors or we're going to work with Brown and Brown. They're going to set this all up. Those clinic vendors will take a look at our healthcare spend. They're going to spend, dig some time into it and then they're going to say, we think we can save you X, Y, and Z. This is how we're, this is how we do it. Clinic vendor A, clinic vendor B, clinic vendor C. Some of them will provide a guarantee and say, we'll save you 10% on this bucket of money, which is typically your primary care. So we'll save X, Y, and Z and we'll guarantee it. Some will say, we're going to save X, Y, and Z. We're not going to guarantee it. We weigh all those options, but they'll be able to present all that and say, no, we think we can do this and this is why we think we can do this.
Some of the other things you mentioned about, you know, backend contracts with providers, can that happen during this coming year?
Yeah, we already have MDI and ATI in place and we're working on.
So savings can be generated going forward. So you can be building fund balance even as we go forward, even with the 8.8%.
Well, we have MDI and ATI already in the months that are considered.
Do you have other things, other plans that you're looking for, other ideas?
So, yep, we're working on osteo, but again, that's, those aren't huge drivers. Diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, those are your drivers. 25% of every dollar in the United States is spent on a diabetes-related incident. $25 of every healthcare dollar spent in the United States, or 25% of every healthcare dollar is spent on a diabetes-related incident. So like when we talk wellness plans, it's all great to do a color run, helps get everybody excited. Let's come at your steps at school. All of those are really great morale-building things, but they don't drive your health plan. Putting in a diabetes prevention program to help people who are on borderline or putting in a diabetes monitoring program for people who qualify, that's going to drive your health plan. If you're on, if you have high blood pressure, how can we get you your meds for free so that you'll take them for the rest of your life? Because it's going to be 10,000% cheaper than a heart attack. If you have high cholesterol, how can we get you to take high cholesterol medication every day? We can do that by providing it free. That's what the clinic can do for us. How can we get you to take that every day? Because that'll be significantly cheaper than an incident related to a stent in your heart, or bypass surgery, right? All of those things are cost drivers to a health plan.
You know, coming back to the HMO, I know that you mentioned that it was not preferred, you know, PPO because of the geography. Can we get the information of what of a geography of employee and staff is and see? For example, I know that there are bigger systems right now, like even Advocate Aurora has become so big that they are going from Green Bay to almost Illinois, you know, which covers everything. So at least just to get a perspective of that, how much would a HMO plan save the money, which will be even cheaper for the employees with the premium perspective and our spending also?
Those will be all things that Laura and I will work with Brown and Brown on, is all of those. If it's even a viable option, we're probably not bringing it to the board. So if I use that HMO or the the narrow network and they tell us it's 33% this, 33% this, 33% this, I'm not bringing that to you. I'm just going to tell you unless I'm absolutely directed to because disrupting 67% of our healthcare patients or our staff and their families, that's not in my best interest. It's not in our best interest as a school board. If it's 85, 90, 75, yeah, we might bring it as an option and say, this is a disruption report. But then we have to realize 25% of the people are going to be off-put by that in some fashion, right? If it's 99, we're probably sad, this is what we're going to do because it's so high. But we'll take, we take a look at all those things behind the scenes and we decide what's even, what's even going to get some legs, right? And so bringing some options to you, yep, those are all going to come. We're not going to make those decisions behind the scenes and tell you, oh, we're changing deductible and we're doing this and that's just what we're going to do.
So you realize there's work to be done. You're, you're doing that work and you're going to bring it to us when we can, when we can put that work for our.
When there's something we need to devote on.
So we will have something for, to be in place for July 1 of 2024. There will be something coming to the board. Whether, whatever the board does with it, they do with it, right? But ultimately, our plan rests on a calendar year of July 1st to June 30th.
Right.
So we can enact some of those direct contracting pieces because we can bring those in at any time and just tell people it's free to go here because it's significantly cheaper for us to direct them there. Because they're not a true, bless you, they're not a true like health plan change deductible, if we think deductible co-insurance, those types of things.
And there are levers you're working on.
We will, those will be coming to the board for.
Well, I appreciate your interest, enthusiasm and knowledge on this topic.
I don't know if I express it, but I really love healthcare.
It's subtle. I never would have guessed.
I think especially being self-insured, it's better to have a healthy population of the employees and ways and means of finding that, making a healthy population staff so that decreases the cost. I think it's, it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult puzzle to fit in, but you know, I think we have to make sure that it's affordable, that it's likable. At the same time, you know, it's a balance, affordable and likable because healthcare insurance is the very, very, very important factor for each and every individual because we live in a country where if you don't have health insurance coverage, you will end up in a big, big, big donut hole.
And we want it to be holistic. I mean, social worker, you know, born and bred and it's like, we just can't just focus on the blood pressure and the diabetes. We want to focus on, you know, the the mental health, the emotional well-being, the, like I said, you know, all things that contribute to people not taking care of themselves.
Yeah, Mary, a really great thing about our new partnership with our new consultant is that they have a specialist that is partnering with us that specifically focuses on wellness for our employees. So she and I will kind of start that work through the next year and kind of build a holistic wellness program for our employee group.
Cool.
And you know, one of the things which kind of, of course, the big organizations do is that they give, for example, this incentive for you to kind of, it's a very low incentive, like for example, I get $500 if I have a healthy BMI, if I have a normal cholesterol and if I, my sugar is kind of completely normal, like fasting, you know. And it gives me a kind of incentive to, you know, take some extra steps, you know, I'm always working at, you know, at least trying to look at, except Ramadan, you know, trying to look at what I, what I eat. But maybe finding some ways and means, you know, of talking to the consultant of how we can incentivize, as you mentioned, free medications and all this stuff, but also, you know, medication is a step only backward. We have, how to prevent, you know, like, you know, diabetes, okay, you know, the patients having pre-diabetes, okay, like, you know, let's talk about, you know, maybe can we, can we create, create some kind of incentive that you lose weight and work on your pre-diabetes so they don't become a diabetic, which will end up saving a lot of money for the organization.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cromie. School Board Policy 3720, student transportation. Yep. So you're going to see that up here on the board. Just a couple of key components in the actual policy itself. Some of it is just language change to make sure we have the right names of the people in there or like school board. But you'll notice in bullet point one, we wanted to make sure that we clarify student transportation. We are required by the state to transport resident students. So in bullet point one, it was not listed as resident students, so we want to make sure we're talking about resident students. If we talk about bullet point two, again, we're required to transport private school students, but we're only required to transport them or provide funding for them if they are residents of our school district. So another key component is that resident piece. And then in the second paragraph, the district's responsibility for individual students, we really want to make sure that we're talking about their pickup location to the drop-off location. So that's what we really consider first contact with the student to the last contact with the student. So while we're not for a student or right way for next year, they are an extension of us and we expect them to treat our kids with respect from the time they're on the bus till the very last moment they walk off the bus. And then all aspects in between. And then the final piece at the very bottom, we wanted to make sure that because we consider it part of school, we link a whole bunch of school board policies to this that would potentially interact with a student's school day, which we consider from the moment you're on the bus, you're behaving as if you were in school till the moment you're off the bus. We hope you behave that way outside of that too, but like ultimately, we only control those particular windows. Then we take a look.
Question.
Sure.
You, in the last paragraph, you deleted establish routes.
Yep. So we will not be doing that next year. We're trusting Right Way with that.
Do we have final sign-off on the routes? Are they just, it's theirs? We don't have any say on the routes?
We do, but we are not establishing them, but they run, we own the routes. It's our district. We own the routes regardless of who does them, but we are not establishing them. We're tasking Right Way with that particular piece. And so part of our, our designated drivers, we have five in the district, but one of our drivers spent the majority of their time doing the routing. So we don't have that position anymore. We're transferring that ownership to Right Way, who has professionals, like that's, that's their full-time job.
I understand that. I'm just wondering if we should put something in there about the fact that we do own the routes.
That's with the contract.
We don't have to, that's implied.
Our contract.
Yeah, and it's with the contract with Right Way.
Our contract with Right Way says that. We talked about that when we, when we signed that contract. I don't know that it has to be stated again.
Well, but I mean, the public's not going to see the contract. Public's going to see this policy and wondering.
The only reason established routes is being removed is because we did it in-house.
No, I understand that, but I'm just wondering.
So if we bring it back to doing it in-house, we would bring back this policy and add it in there.
Well, I'm just wondering if we should say we are, we own the routes, I guess. I mean, why don't we?
It would be a redundant of an implied relationship with any busing vendor.
When I look at the policy, I don't even know there is a vendor. I mean, can we, does it even say that vendor's possible?
The policy only has to state that we are responsible for providing transportation for resident students. Does not, policy should not say how we are providing that, but that we are providing that. If you look up a WOSB policy.
I understand that. I understand that.
They, they will have something very similar.
I think the language supervise and evaluate the transportation program sort of encompasses many, many things, including the notion of owning routes.
Are we pretty specific about complete required reports, supervise, evaluate the program? Under there, you're saying, okay, and other duties as?
So we don't have an individual to establish.
I understand that, but we, I'm just wondering if we might include our ownership of the routes, you know, that we have.
It's not necessary. It is implied by having a contracted vendor because they are taking our information. It is ours. They don't exist without our information for a contracted vendor with us.
I would say my only issue is that anti-harassment is spelled a net harassment.
Oh, sorry. We're going to do that right now. Click that. If we go down to the procedure, again, procedure is how we're going to take care of enacting this policy. You'll note kind of in this first page here that now all routes are loaded into Power School. So historically, that wasn't there. That changed this year. So we'll notify parents in August that your routes are loaded in and you can check them. If we do a mass change throughout the course of the year, we'll notify people to check and log into Power School and check again. But parents could go in every night and see the route. They'll also be able to get the app because we'll have the app available as well. And then really the other big thing in here, other than some language, is this Milwaukee Public Schools transportation piece. This was a direct correlation to Chapter 220 students, which we don't have anymore. That program doesn't exist. So we don't have any affiliation with Milwaukee Public School Transportation anymore, so no need to keep it in our procedure. Everything else is pretty benign in nature, changing names or, or changing the form. You'll see here we linked the form, but it just has a different name to it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So where it says a parent or designated must assume responsibility for the kindergarten kids, what's the process if nobody's there?
Yeah, bus driver calls dispatch and dispatch calls home. So someone's not here to pick up your child. No one answers the home. They call the school and the school starts. And ultimately, like in the worst-case situation, they should drive them back to the school.
Okay, but that doesn't need to be spelled out anywhere.
No. Normally what happens, Mary, is, is if a kid doesn't have a pickup, if nobody's there for the pickup, the driver will continue on with the route as they call and then they'll go back after the route is done and go back to the.
And that's only for kindergartners, though.
4K.
Kindergarteners, 4K.
First grade, dry and roll.
First grade.
You can get out, you can, you can leave, you, yes, you're trusted to go home from your stop.
I move that we approve Policy 37.
This is just first reading.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yep. You get the suit on it for a couple more weeks to make sure we have everything in it you want.
All the spelling errors.
Fabulous. I'll look for.
Every a neat harassment link in there, we want to make sure we've changed.
But you know what? I had one question because a couple of different times it talks about extracurricular transportation requirements or whatever else. Is there, if it's in the policy, does that indicate that there will always be transportation for an extracurricular?
So you'll notice bullet point three up there says all recognize co-curricular activities in accordance with district regulations. So we allow some van usage or we might drive our small bus. Or we might tell people we're, you're coming, we're meeting you there, such as like tennis will often meet at the Village Club in Green Hill.
I just, like, I know the last couple of years, we haven't had the buses to offer transportation for, say, the swim and dive team.
Right.
So I just want to make sure the policy isn't saying like, yeah, you're always going to get a bus if you're on a team.
Yeah, no. So our regulations allow us to provide alternate ways to and from events for that particular reason.
Even if the alternate way is you better find your own way.
Part of the language too is that transportation shall versus must in the sentence leading into it.
I think the goal is to try and have more transportation available.
Yeah, hopefully we won't have that problem, but I just know.
Try to provide as much as we can, but we have to be flexible with that.
Yeah, I mean, over the last couple of years, there have been a lot of athletic activities that don't have a bus, you know, they have to coordinate with parents.
And the state doesn't require it. State only requires to and from school transportation.
And I know that, I know that Jordan Hine getting his license and driving, driving some kids to activities has saved, it was 300 hours. I'm sure it's 600.
It's 450 hours.
Of classroom time for the kids.
And doubling up sports on the bus. I mean, there's, as much as can be done is being done.
I think they're trying to.
Yeah.
They're having creative solutions to help these things out.
I'm not complaining about that at all. I just want to make sure that the policy isn't saying like, you're always going to get a bus because.
Yeah, shall and must are the big keyword, the keyword in that.
All right.
It's a good question.
Thank you. And student conduct on bus policy.
Okay, so this one semi accompanies what Andy just went through, but it's just about student behavior on the bus. This one's actually going to be up to be retired as it's already covered in the handbook and just like student behaviors are covered in a handbook. So there's currently language in the handbook, I apologize, it was in a situation report, it just didn't get linked, but it's already currently in the handbook, so it's in there, it doesn't need to be a separate policy. If something is broken, the appropriate steps are in that handbook. And then if it ever had to get referred to the level of safety beyond what a school can look at, like an expulsion or something, we have that language in those policies. Also, the Policy 5400 is the code of classroom and student conduct, which is what it would fall under also for policy-wise, which will be cross-referenced in the handbook. So this one's just up for, to be retired.
And I can tell you that, that other bus drivers were, are glad that it's becoming more uniform with school policy or in the handbook as, rather than there's different ex, separate rules for riding on the bus.
It's good to have that insight view.
So. At any rate, is there any, any more questions on retiring that policy? Okay. Policy 4030, overtime, safe harbor policy and payroll deduction complaint, this is an action item we talked about last time and we will be looking today for a motion to move to retire school board policy 4030. Motion was made by Mrs. Wachowski, seconded by Dr. Beer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Board liaison reports.
There was an SWSA meeting. It was kind of an update on the budget. Budget's kind of being developed or back in their rooms doing their thing. Although I was interested, Anne, you mentioned, because South Milwaukee had this big event for letter writing. I guess they got 400 letters with that community meeting.
Wow, it was a very successful event as I understand.
So, although I didn't go, but I, I may share that with you, what they, what they did. And they also, I think there was a, Walker Business Alliance, they also had a meeting with businesses in Waukesha that was also positive. And I guess, are we playing, what's our plan with our legislators? I don't know, Anne, are you, or we're just going to wait to see?
Sure, I mean, the key communicator meeting was a couple of weeks ago. I think that was an outstanding opportunity for us as a district to talk to Senator Bradley and clarify some of the funding that came through last year and where that goes, that it didn't actually come back to our schools. So I took that as a great opportunity to get into that. Like we said, we spoke, well, not we, Andy and Mike spoke in Waukesha a few weeks ago. We've done our joint resolution and sent it out as far as between now and when they come out with the biennial budget. We don't have another plan at this point in time. We've talked about internally, like what does it look like to put resources on the website for families to access if they wanted to reach out more to their legislators? I think as far as for next year too, we're looking at adding Representative Rodriguez to our key communicator group. So that would be our two main people that would be a part of that team. Because Senator Bradley's already committed to staying on next year.
Yeah, that was, Anne, you asked the question at the end there directly to him, which was a great question.
It's been a nice way to engage and it's nice for him to hear the community. I mean, he's been very connected in our community anyways, but this gets a little deeper into like, what's the actual work we're doing and what does that budgeting look like to grow in those areas?
They also mentioned, I think, South Milwaukee's big on this, I guess, but they have a lot of representatives coming through the schools and coming and visiting. Have we thought about inviting?
That we can talk about that?
Going forward, so that's where that's at. That's all.
I, a couple liaison reports. I met with Christine Cody this week for my student services liaison, talked a lot about the youth mental health report and getting that ready for a presentation tonight, but then also just kind of following up on our special ed conversations that we had, is that like a month ago now? Well, you, many of us were there and just kind of how those conversations are ongoing with those families and things. There is a session coming up in two weeks or so for our families of gifted identified students, so kind of, you know, similar setup to that, families invited to come and have some listening, listening session around gifted identif, identif, gifted identification. And so that was a good, good meeting with Christine about our student services department. Middle school liaison report will come to you at our next meeting, some meeting with them next week, but just to alert you that eighth grade promotion will be on June 7th. If anybody's looking for a hot date, I predict that'll be an exciting event. Education foundation liaison, our scholarships will be announced at the senior honors event, which is May 30th. The golf outing is June 16th. I will say again, y'all should come. But also the milkman game is August 31st. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to join us for the milkman game, but that is a super fun event. Obviously, it's fun to go to milkman game anyway. It's very fun when Olive Franklin is there to celebrate and that is where our excellent teacher, excellent educator awards are announced. And so that application process will be coming out for nominees in the next like couple of weeks and then we'll be soliciting those nominations from the community and then awarding those awards at that event. So save the date for August 31st. And then wellness committee liaison will be again next week, sorry.
All right.
You've got a lot of things happening, I guess. A lot of things.
And as far as, as far as liaisons go for next school year, I will put out a, a survey of what people are interested in. Liaisons for this year remain, for the school year remain the same until, until the school year switches. So with the exception of Linda going to CISA next Tuesday, the 16th.
But we have other liaisons. I mean, there's the school liaison, I get that, but then there's other ones that usually we shuffle.
Right, so he's saying he's going to send out a survey to see what we're interested in and then he'll shuffle.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't shuffle in the middle of the school year. I mean, they haven't, when I've been on, when I've been on the board, they haven't shuffled in the middle of school year.
Well, I think they would. Once you come on the board, you have an assignment.
It's almost to the end of the school year, so he'll.
Well, I mean, I came on the school board four years ago and took over the assignments till the end of the year that Mr. Alexandrovich had. Mary is taking over Mr. Alexandrovich liaison positions. There will be new liaison positions at the start of the fiscal year or for the next school year.
Well, that's how it's.
You may have come on the board maybe mid-year, you weren't, it wasn't an election. You may have come on, appointed.
Okay, well, I think it's his purview to make that decision.
No, I, actually, actually, as, for the last four years, that's been the way that it has been done in terms of liaison positions. So I think we should keep it, maybe, maybe others, maybe others have, maybe others have different view of what should happen and we can discuss that at some point, but that actually has been the precedent in the past.
Keep it simple, just finish it up the year and then.
Especially with a school, I think it'd be hard to, to switch.
Schools wouldn't change. Yeah.
You know, right now.
So we'll look for that survey.
School and community engagement reports.
It's May, we're all everywhere. There's recital every night.
Have you driven by the high school on any evening in the last like three weeks? There is nowhere to park.
A lot of people are going to a lot of things.
It's all happening everywhere.
Every, lots of.
Are you aware of the wellness walk that the health department is?
Right, they're doing it on Saturday, May 20th. We are aware and I believe that the team's working on putting a table together that's going to be there.
Oh, there is? Okay, I just hearing about that. There's also something at the sports complex, a family wellness.
I'm unaware of what they're doing at the sports complex, if you have anything, send it my way. But the other one's in conjunction with the health department and we worked with them as soon as we knew about it. So that was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, because signup was through the rec department.
Right, yeah, no, it's, the signup's not through the district, but it's a focus on mental health, so they're doing the walk, but then there's also tables that you can set up. That's the part that we'll partake in. Because Christine and the team's been working on what that table will look like and with Nurse Murray. So, yeah. Yep. If you're interested in walking, yep, sign up through the health department.
Ms. Beth, did we had an opportunity to kind of meet and the new, new mayor of Franklin?
I have not had an opportunity yet, no.
Yeah, I've tried a few times and we have not been able to get together yet either, but we're working on it and we will. Thank you, Mr. Craig, for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Alderman Craig is, is in the back of the room. School board member comments. Our future agenda items, community reintegration center staff presentation, tobacco poster winner